All right, welcome to Lander County Commission Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin, Board of County Highway Commissioners, February 25th, 2021. Tell the meeting to order. Art, will you lead us in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a moment of silence. All right, moving forward. Lander County Commission may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Good morning, thank you. I did have a couple of meetings. One was the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority. Of course, they're really busy tracking the bills. We got updates on all the different legislative measures that are going on and being proposed in our new legislature. They're full of them. We're opposing some and endorsing some, so that's ongoing. On the 17th, I did attend virtually a workshop that was handled by NACO, and it was a webinar on the opioid settlements. It was extremely interesting with some of the states have already settled with some of the manufacturers. And a couple of them actually testified that with their settlement, with their large amount, it's more like the tobacco settlement, but they didn't want everything going to the states. They wanted some going to the counties and what they were doing with the money and a lot of drug rehabilitation and such. But a part of the settlement in a couple of the cases, the manufacturers gave them merchandise. So here's a million dollars of opioids for you. It's like, they thought, well, we'll give them to the hospital. We'll make use of them because we still have them. And as it turned out, they're on very strict schedules of when they get the different pills. And the next thing was, most of the hospitals are saying, we have all that. We don't need that, or we don't want that part. So even though it seemed like it was great in the settlement, it wasn't such a cool idea. So that was interesting in what's coming down. Yesterday, the Nevada Mining Association had a full day, actually, for mining advocacy with the Digital Legislative Day. And we had different webinars and Zoom meetings throughout the day. There was a whole chat section, actually, with a couple of our legislators and Tyree Gray, who is, of course, the president of the Nevada Mining Association. And one of them was our Assemblyman Howard Watt, who's on the Natural Resources Committee, and also Senator Pete Goachia. So they were very definitely on top of everything. Alexis Hansen also addressed us on some of the things. But the biggest thing that we picked up through the whole day was that we have to be active. We have to be an advocate. And all of the legislatures that addressed it said, email us. We really want to hear from you. Call us, email us. And on our NACO book, their email is all included with our Assemblymen and our Senators, too. And simply women, I don't want to be politically correct here. But it's extremely important, and it doesn't have to be anything long or lengthy, just where you're supporting them. And the biggest thing is 68% of the people, they said, are getting all their information from social media. Well, social media is certainly right on, of course, saying they don't pay their fair share and boo on them, and we want their money. And I mean, so much erroneous information, which is so sad. So that's what they're saying. If you have anything that you can do on Twitter or social media or anything to counteract that, just say, they're wrong. Do your research, you know, focus in on the real facts of what it's going to entail. So that was the biggest thing that I took back from that. And just one thing I did want to share with you, I don't know whether you're aware of it, you may be, but the Senate Bill SB 77 that Eureka County introduced, I'm going to read to you the bill. It's kind of interesting. They actually testified before the Senate Committee on Government Affairs. And the bill is a very narrow exception to our open meeting law. It would allow county commissions to meet in a closed section, closed session. Did I say section? A closed section, session, with the federal agency when we discuss projects under NEPA, if we're a cooperating agency. The goal of the bill is to encourage the fullest cooperation possible with the elected officials of the county, rather than resort to private meetings with a single commissioner or non-elected county staff. That was brought forth by, like I said, the Eureka County Commissioner, J.J. Goachia, who is the chair, and the Eureka County Natural Resource Manager, Jake Tibbetts. So NACO did testify in that favor, and we're looking forward to support on that measure. That would be kind of a very nice thing for us continuing on with the federal agencies. Thank you.
Thank you.
I tried to attend a virtual meeting on the sentencing committee, and it lasted five minutes and two seconds. And I couldn't get back into it for some reason. I don't know what the problem was, other than that.
Okay. I attended, I don't know if you attended in person, I did the Humboldt County Water Board, but by Zoom, it was next impossible to hear what they were saying. And so I got bits and pieces of, it was a four-hour meeting, and it was just bits and pieces of the different things that they were talking about. So I wasn't able to pull out enough. I would be getting the minutes from them so I can bring that back, you know, more depth in depth of what they were talking about. And then last Friday, by Zoom, I also did the legislative meeting through NACO. And once again, the China Springs was brought back up. And they're trying to figure out if they, because we're going to end up paying more for China Springs, that they believe they'll be coming back to the counties because of the budget cuts. And what everybody wants to do, a lot of counties utilize them a lot more than we do. We barely utilize them, and so have to pay the amount of money we're going to end up having to pay because our JPO tries to do everything here as best they can and not send them anywhere. And so that'll be coming forward even stronger when they come and want more money. And they have had problems there, and they're trying to figure out if they need to reorganize or if it's beneficial, or if they're better when they come back. And it's about, you know, 50/50 on, a part of them say, yes, they come back and they love the program, the other part say, no, they don't like the program. So I guess it's to anybody's palate of what they like and what they don't like. So that's something that really needs to be paid attention for the amount of money we pay. So that's about it, all I have.
Come report.
Okay.
What's the water board meeting?
Love Lock?
Love Lock.
So you had to hear?
And most of their information was on the end of January, and we got all our water, our snowpack has started in February. So most of what they were talking about didn't really pertain to what's going on now because we were at like 37% of our snowpack in January, but now it's way higher now. But they don't have the, everything hasn't come through yet, all their information, to accurately predict what's going on. But right now, Rye Patch is way low. It's got enough water in it for them to take out one watering season, to water one time. So it was looking pretty bleak, but now it's starting to look better. And at the end of the meeting, they came up with, they're going to put in a salmon farm, Cosgrave, and they'll be raising 60,000 tons of salmon a year.
Where?
Cosgrave. When you go going towards Reno, you look off to the right there, and you see those three little pivots out there, the wet spots? That's where it's going in.
And they're going to put them in Humboldt?
No, it's a commercial fishery, just to raise and sell.
Fish.
Not to introduce back into the habitat.
Wow.
I thought that was pretty cool.
That's interesting.
At Cosgrave?
Raising salmon in the desert.
Is this side of Burns Brook?
Yep.
Wow.
So the one other thing that they were talking about in that meeting is the amount that they are paying their lobbyists because the lobbyists can't really get in the door at this time. So they know everybody's kind of reevaluating how much they're paying, you know, per year for lobbyists because you can't get through the door, and they're on the phone, you know, or they have just a little bit of time, they're not making contact. So that was brought up as well, like everybody else is reevaluating how much they're paying lobbyists because they can't get through the door to do any lobbying. So beyond that, that's, so. All right. So for staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended?
I think most everything I have is on the agenda. I will say for COVID, we do have three active cases in Lander County. We were as low as one. So that is just for your guys' knowledge on moving forward with some of the agenda items that are to come. So outside of that, I think you guys covered most of the things that I was involved with.
So for public comment, for non-agenda items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any. And discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do you have any public comment? Okay.
Muted.
Move forward.
Unmuted.
On the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Number one, approval of February 25th, 2021 Agenda Notice. Number two, approval of May 7th, 2020 Special Budget Workshop Minutes. Number three, approval of August 27th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number four, approval of September 10th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number five, approval of January 28th, 2021 Meeting Minutes. Number six, approval of February 11th, 2021 Meeting Minutes. And number seven, approval of payroll change requests. Does that have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I did not receive any payroll change requests. Did anyone else?
No.
Okay. With that, then, I will make a motion that we approve number one, which is the approval of February 25th Agenda Notice. And number three, the approval of August 27th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. I do not receive any of the other minutes.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Brian. Patsy made the motion, and Brian's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the payments of bills, we're going to add to that, we're going to pull out check number 210756 and 210834.
You want that or make a motion to approve the payment of bills?
Second.
Brian made the motion, Art's second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve, check number 210756 and 210834.
Second.
Patsy made the motion, Art's second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain, they're made to mine clear.
Very good, moving forward. So for public hearing?
Madam Chair, you need to wait two minutes.
Okay.
One minute now.
Okay. We will wait. Good to go? All right. So public hearing for possible action to approve/disapprove the adoption of ordinance 2021-01 to change the hospital district board membership from a seven-member to a five-member, to five members. So for the title, the ordinance amending Lander County Code Title II, Chapter 28, Section 0102, change the hospital district board from a seven-member to a five-member and other matters properly related thereto. Okay, so this is open for public hearing? Does anyone want to make any comments for or against?
Muted.
Jason Blake?
Unmuted.
For the record, from Battle Mountain General Hospital. When I talk in public, my glasses fog up with the thing on. So I just want to appreciate, share my appreciation with you for going through this process with us. In the past, it's been difficult. We have experienced some difficulty to place a seven-member board through the regular elections. It seems like we're able to place five on a regular basis, and we're always looking to appoint two. And so we have requested this, the board has requested, the hospital board has requested this, and we appreciate your consideration in this. We do want to continue serving and allowing the public to serve as the governing board of the hospital. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a clarification on this, because it's going to look strange, especially years down the road when we look at the ordinance, and it says the seats are designated as A, B, C, and F instead of D and E. And the reason we took out D and E is because they weren't filled at this time. Is that correct? So it seemed the easiest thing to do, but it is going to look strange. So we'll just put it on the record that that's the reason.
That's right.
With that, I will make a motion that we-
Can I have a public comment?
I'm sorry. You were coming up slowly, I apologize.
So Doug Mills, for the record, I'm currently on the hospital board, and I would just want to echo those things that Jason mentioned. The other thing is that we're in the position now where we can chase after two more hospital board members or go with five, which would be easier for us. But in our current situation, with only five and two missing seats, it does make it difficult for us to get a quorum. We've been pretty lucky so far that we haven't had to actually cancel any meetings. But we get nervous a little bit sometimes right before the meeting starts, whether we're going to be, or whether we're going to be able to hold the meeting or not. So it is the hospital board's opinion that we would rather have five than seven, and the seven seems to be a little overkill for a hospital board. One thing I would ask is that if there is anybody that does have public opinion, we'd love to hear from you because so far, we don't get a lot of public coming to hospital board meetings. So we're deciding this kind of in a vacuum is where. So any public comment would be appreciated and welcome. We like to know what the public really thinks on this topic. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. With that, I will make a motion that we approve the adoption of ordinance 2021-01 to change the hospital district board membership from seven members to five members.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Patsy made the motion, Brian's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is effective as of this date, is that correct, Counselor?
It's effective after two more weeks of publication.
Two more weeks, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Number three, for discussion of possible action to set a date for, in March 2021, for the budget workshops?
In the past, we've done this like 17th, 18th. If you guys were going to change that, I'd suggest moving it further down the line than closer. But it's entirely up to you guys and your schedules.
We're talking March, right? Okay. Actually, the 18th is a general session with NACO for their annual meeting.
Is that personal?
Yeah, I would prefer the 16th and 17th if we have to have two days. How does that work?
I'm good with whatever works for everyone else.
Yeah, and it doesn't matter to me. March is going to be busy for me. I'm going to have two cataract surgeries real quick. So just go ahead, and I'll try to be here.
We're going to assume for maybe the last week in March?
Pardon me?
The last week in March?
Last week in March?
Will that work?
Would that work for everybody?
Yeah, that's fine. Don't we have some dates that we have to meet, though, with the budget?
Yeah, that's in April, but that's only tentative budget.
Okay, so if we meet the last week of March, yeah, that looks good to me. It's going to be good fishing that weekend.
Every weekend in March is going to be good, Art.
So what days are we looking at?
So are we looking at the 30th and 31st? Does that work for everyone?
Of March?
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that work?
When is the tentative, April what?
And a goal for you, Bert?
Yes, sir.
Is to make budget as painless as possible. They're really fighting good on the fishing page, man. They start spawning.
Yeah, pre-spawned.
So we decided when we're going to do it? Is that the 31st?
No, we're waiting. I want to see when the tentative's due in April. Because if it's earlier in April, I'd probably bump it up a week in March. April 15th. So do we want to set it for the 30th, 31st, or would it be better to do it the 23rd, 24th?
I'm good with whatever works for everyone. Is it 23rd, 24th?
24th is general session.
Oh, 24th is general session?
22nd, 23rd.
22nd, 23rd?
That's okay.
Yep.
Okay, the 22nd and 23rd. Will that work? All right. All right. So going to go ahead and move forward for possible action?
Can we, can we move to item number five now?
Yep. All right. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the resolution 2021-03, removing Lander County from the state of emergency. Number five.
Do we have our guests on the phone?
Anybody that has anything to say that to mute themselves?
The only people I see, I only have-
So anyone that's on the phone here, if you'll mute your phone for us so we can't hear you echoing through unless you have a public comment, we would appreciate it.
I don't show anybody on my phone.
Yep. So does somebody want to read the resolution?
I'll read it.
Okay.
Before, yeah, the resolution has to be read in. But I have a couple of concerns on the resolution that I would really like us to think about looking at instead of passing it exactly as it is.
Muted. Unmuted.
I'll read it.
Yeah, I'll read it.
Okay. Yeah, first of all, let me say that I know this commission has had some real concerns about all of this for the past year. We have taken it very seriously and very thoughtfully. But I do have a problem with a couple of the things that are on the declaration, or removing the declaration. I have a problem not with removing that, the state of emergency, but I have a problem with the way the resolution is written. First of all, let me say that I don't think there's probably anybody here that hasn't been touched somehow by what's been going on. I mean, I've lost two very dear friends, and actually, last fall, my sister wasn't even able to attend her only daughter's funeral because she had COVID and she was in the hospital. I also have family and friends of family that have recovered from COVID, but it's still a lot of medical symptoms that they continue to have and will have. So as I said, it's a very serious thing that we've been looking at. And with that, I think there's two sides to everything. And one of the parts in the resolution that we have here is, on the second page, we are actually referring to the Great Barrington Declaration. And as I said, there's two sides to everything. And when this Great Barrington Declaration came out, and I know there's a lot of signatures on it, but actually, the World Health Organization and the American Public Health Association was strictly against this, along with another hundred other associations that said they did not agree with it. Now, some of us may, and some of us may agree with parts of it. And even the 52,000 signatures that they're talking about, a lot of those were bogus. And they were bogus to the point that they were stupid names, and everybody knows it wasn't true. Some were even vulgar names that were put on, which kind of ruined the whole intent of these people that took it extremely seriously. So because that is such a contentious declaration, I think we could pass this resolution without even naming it on there because it looks like we're actually passing it with approving that. And I do not approve of that complete declaration at all. I don't want us to pass this, and everybody thinks it's politically motivated. It's not. The other question that I have is on the very end, when we're talking to the school, and we're giving them our opinion on that we want the schools open. And yes, we do. But it does say, they should be open safely with no restrictions and no masks. And I have a real problem saying that that's really how we all feel. I would like to see us say optional masks or take out the word masks completely. Don't even mention it, and just say, open up. Restrictions and in-person instruction. Those two things are a real concern for me. But I do think that we should go ahead and pass the resolution because I do not agree with the full lockdown that we have had. And I think we may be even looking at future lockdowns. So we're taking a stand, and as I said, we're doing it very thoughtfully. So I'm hoping that you might look at those two things that I'm bringing up before you.
We probably better read the resolution.
I'll read the resolution.
Okay, so we'll read the light resolution and go from there?
Resolution number 2021-03 of the Board of Lander County Commissioners. Summary, a resolution removing Lander County from a state of emergency. Whereas, the Governor of the State of Nevada issued a declaration of emergency to facilitate the state's response to the COVID-19 pandemic on March 12th, 2020, and has issued over 30- and has issued over 35 emergency directives since that date. And whereas a state of emergency was declared by the Lander County Board of County Commissioners by proclamation 2020-02 on March 18th, 2020 as a result of a public health event, COVID-19, and the impacts to hospital emergency rooms, local government agencies, local businesses, residents and visitors. And whereas, Lander County, in an effort to avoid irreparable economic damage to local businesses, has previously created a policy wherein a business owner who has incurred expenses in the form of fines, penalties, or legal fees due to a state government directive can get reimbursed from the county with the county pursuing all legal defense on behalf of the business. And whereas, the State of Nevada has steadfastly refused to work directly with rural Nevada to create policies tailored to rural Nevada, instead mandating one-size-fits-all policies created for more densely populated counties. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners recognizes that the governor's COVID-19-related restrictions have caused damaging long-term economic effects on the Lander County economy. And whereas, the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution declares, "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States." And whereas, the Great Barrington Declaration issued by infectious disease epidemiologists and public health scientists and co-signed by more than 52,000 medical professionals, states currently, current lockdown policies are producing devastating effects in short and long-term public health, and keeping these measures in place will cause irreparable damage. And whereas, decisions affecting the health and well-being of Lander County citizens must be based on empirical evidence without regard to politics or the influence of special interest groups. And whereas, Chapter 244 of the Nevada revised statutes establishes the county's authority to regulate matters of local concern, including the public health, safety, and welfare of those in the county. And whereas, the Lander County Board of County Commissioners finds that the public health, safety, and welfare of those in the county, as well as the economic prosperity of the county, is a matter of local concern. And whereas, the Lander County Health Board has recommended that we are no longer in an emergency situation and there is more damage being done to our children and the economy due to restrictions than due to virus, and it's time to get back to work and back to school. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lander County Commission hereby removes Lander County from the previously declared state of emergency and declares that the county is open and free of restrictions. And be it further resolved that our county is extremely concerned about the impacts to our children of any further delays to in-person education and therefore, all school districts in our jurisdiction are urged to safely open all schools as soon as possible with no restrictions and no masks and provide in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible without further delay. Passed and adopted this 25th day of February 2021.
So with that, is there any appetite for taking out the words no masks or putting optional masks?
I have a question.
And taking out the Great Barrington Declaration?
I have the part on the, even though we have this in our resolution, the school board's going to have to still follow the Department of Education's guidelines, correct?
Yes.
So regardless if we have that in there or not, that...
Well, no, I understand. Like I said, it's an opinion, but we are making an opinion of no masks. And I think that's overboard to say that. I really do. With the seriousness of what we are all experiencing. Now, we're giving them the option and that's fine, but for us to make a resolution and say, "Open as soon as possible with all restrictions and no masks," that's our opinion. And I don't know if it's all of our opinion or whether we should give that kind of an opinion to them. I think that was the whole point, that we're letting everybody make their own decisions. So.
I have a question. Hey Bert, do we have our guests on the phone?
Yeah, there should be some people on the phone.
Okay, good. Because I don't see them on my end here, so.
So do we have?
John Gillett's here, standing by whenever you're ready.
All right.
Let's go.
Yeah, public comment.
So we're going to do public comment real quick? Do we have a public comment on this, please?
Also, Dr. Mark McDonald's available until 10:00 AM.
Okay. Thank you.
Morning, Ms. Clark.
Good morning.
You could turn on the little mic. Push the button on top. Right there. Thank you.
Cindy Clark. I worked for the Lander County School District for 28 years and I have a total in-school experience of 37 years. So I understand what you're saying, but I think that you could say, first of all, let me back up just for a second. I think that we could say that we are in support of the schools being open and that we are in support of the schools being there without masks, even though they may have to make their own decision on what to do. I still think that we could say that we are in support of that. I also think that the, do I call it a document or what do I call that?
Resolution.
Resolution. I thought it was very well-written and I certainly support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name. We don't know who you are.
Amy Nelson. Good morning. First of all, I want to say I'm so proud of this board. You guys are taking a leadership role, have taken it throughout this whole pandemic situation. I know it's been difficult. It's hard to know what's true and not true, the different things that are coming at us. And I just am really proud of Lander County throughout this whole situation. It's the one-year anniversary of two weeks to slow the spread. I worked in the school district. I just finished my 30th year. We thought it was going to be two weeks and now we're 365 days later almost. And it has been devastating for children. Children have a 99.99-plus recovery rate. And I really appreciate what you said, Patty, because if we give people the option, and I have concerns, I can still wear a mask. I can still socially distance. I can still have small gatherings as opposed to large group gatherings. But then at the same time, we can also support people who feel uncomfortable being incredibly healthy and then being forced into a mask. We just don't want to force anything. We want to give people options. So I appreciate that suggestion. The thing that I want to talk about is the severe abuse of power that Governor Sislack has done to the state and the businesses. It's an excellent resolution. The Constitution was designed to protect us from the government. The Constitution was created to limit the powers of the federal, state, and even local government. And there has been severe overreach of our constitutional rights. When I, as a healthy person who never even took a sick day in 30 years, and being told I have to wear a mask to walk into a place of business, that is constitutionally wrong. When my children, I had to homeschool my child, which didn't work well, so she's back in school. Because even though I did 30 years in education, I cannot do that homeschooling deal. She's forced to wear a mask right now to attend school. She's breathing in her own carbon dioxide. Very wrong. Anyway, we can go on on that. The Constitution guarantees our God-given rights to life, liberty, and to precedent to happiness. The government does not give us our rights. The government needs to be limited. 365 days ago almost, we had an emergency order for two weeks to slow the spread. And it has been devastating to small businesses, economies, children, athletics, communities. It's time for, it's time for, I'm just really proud of this board because you guys are taking a stand and it's the right thing to do. It's the absolute right thing to do. If people still want to wear a mask, we're not going to do the exact thing and force somebody not to wear a mask. So we're just trying to say that it's, let's be sovereign. Let's have our individual rights. Everybody do what they feel is best for them. This county needs to do what's best for Lander County. And I think that's what you're doing and I'm super proud of you guys for doing that. It's just the main thing is that emergency order is a violation of our constitutional rights, has been since the beginning, and we need to make a stand. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ted? This resolution, the way it's written presently, does not prohibit anyone from wearing a mask if they so choose, right?
That's right. Matter of fact, it takes it back to before we declared the state of emergency. That's it. And then people can do what they want to do. The whole point is that we have certain constitutional and unalienable rights. And with those rights being divested in our citizens, they can choose to do what they want to. With the state of emergency, they can't. I think they still can, but according to the governor, they can't. So this, this not only states that Lander County believes in the Constitution, that it will defend the rights of its citizens if challenged.
I'd like to hear from the doctors, since he only has until 10:00. If he has something to say about the wearing of the mask.
Yeah, I just, one thing is to Joey and to the doctors that as far as Patty's consideration about the Great Barrington Declaration, I'd like to know what their response to that is. And if they didn't hear it, maybe Patty could rephrase it for them.
If anybody heard it, let the doctor go.
Okay.
This is Dr. Mark McDonald. I'm a child and adolescent psychiatrist. I see children adolescents in Los Angeles, California, where schools are also closed. And I have had really firsthand witnessing of the detrimental effects of the school closures since March during my practice and also around Los Angeles. And you still my opinion, and it has been for close to a year, that the closure of the schools has been the single greatest government failure in the response to the viral pandemic. There really is such overwhelming damage that's been caused to children that it's almost incalculable. Back in November of this year, this past year, the Journal of American Medical Association actually published an article about the decreased lifespan in children due to the closure of schools. In addition to that, a German registry in January of this year, covering 25,000 children who were forced to wear masks for four more hours per day in or outside of school, showed over a 70% reportage by their parents of suffering from decreased happiness, depression, irritability, poor concentration, fatigue, difficulty returning to school. So the closures and the masks are actually harming children. That is really unequivocal. The Las Vegas school system suffered an increase of 100% in suicides this academic year. It doubled compared to last year while the schools were closed, urging the schools to reopen. In 10 years of practice, I have not lost a single patient to unnatural causes, not one. Since the schools closed, I've lost two. The last one, the second one, just two weeks ago. Dr. Laura Berman's son, 15-year-old child, ordered some drugs because he was bored, staying at home, sheltering, being safer at home. And one of the drugs was laced with fentanyl. His father found him about 20 minutes after taking a drug line face down who was in a pool with his own vomit. He couldn't be resuscitated. She's spoken about this in local, state, and national news on not violating patient confidentiality. She's a well-known public figure. My point is, adults have failed children. We need to reopen the schools and we need to reopen them without any restrictions. All the closures and the restrictions are based upon three fundamental lies. The first is that healthy people, including children, spread this respiratory illness. The second is that healthy people, including children, all die equal rates of this viral illness. And the third lie is that there's no treatment should you be infected. All three of those are fallacious and they have been and they've been known to be a lie since March, early April of 2020. As someone just recently said as I was listening in, the survival rate of children who get sick is 99.997%. 99.7%. The risk of dying in a car accident over a one-year period and returning to school is greater than the risk of death. So clearly, there is no medical justification to keeping children safe by keeping them at home. They are not safer at home. When we move to reopen the schools without restrictions, you may see pushback based on these three lies. It's very, very important to note that there is no rational medical justification to keeping children or teachers at home, specifically when the adults, the teachers, say that they're at risk in coming back, even if the children themselves are safe. A German study that was published in May, May of 2020, showed that over 1,500 children that returned to school not only did not spread the disease to the teachers when they did get infected asymptotically, but in fact, the teachers were actually safer in the classroom than they were in their own homes. This is really important. Teachers right now are arguing, especially the unions, that they can't go back to school because it's too dangerous for them, even if the kids are not dying. That is false. The teachers are worse off at home medically speaking than they are in the classroom. The children actually provide an insulated effect against transmission of this specific respiratory illness. Insulated, protective. Teachers are safer in the classrooms. Finally, the old lie that there is no treatment for this disease is false. For those teachers in the minority who are older, the average age of teachers is about 47, 48 years old, which puts them in the 99-plus percent category of survival, meaning that they're very safe already. But assuming that the teacher is older, perhaps scared, wants to be protected, the teachers have access to safe, cheap, and incredibly effective prophylactic treatments such as vitamin B, zinc, hydroxychloroquine, and ibomectin, all of which had been panned early on due to political and financial power structures. But have even recently, even seen on NBC, JAMA, major news, and medical organizations have admitted that they were wrong from the very beginning to pan these treatments, that they actually do work. They reduce the risk of infection by over 80%. The experimental vaccines have no published or noted reduction in hospitalizations or deaths. They only reduce symptoms. So they are treatments. They are therapeutics. They are not vaccines. If you're going to compare apples to apples, the therapeutics that have been available this whole year are equally, if not more, effective. They're cheap, they're available, they're not unsafe. They're quite, quite safe. There's really no risks of side effects. So the teachers can certainly take those if they wish. If they wish to continue wearing masks, they certainly may do so. If they wish to recuse themselves and do administrative work, that's their choice. But the bottom line is teachers are completely safe coming back to school and obviously, children aren't. I also want to point out that these tests that are often being pushed have children return to school. Putting aside the failings of the accuracy of the test, they are completely irrelevant and unnecessary because children, as I said, essentially are immune to this viral illness. They do not get symptomatically ill, and if they do, it's incredibly minor and short-lived. They do not get hospitalized. They do not die. The risk of dying from flu is multiple times greater for every child than this specific virus. And we have never in history closed schools or required children to wear masks due to flu or during flu season. That is an objective fact. It's not my opinion. So the schools need to be reopened and they should be reopened without restrictions. If teachers are to wear masks, they certainly can, but there is no medical justification for requiring children to wear masks. In fact, the masks cause them physical and emotional harm as well as social isolation. I do not recommend it at all. It's incumbent on the adults in this room to do the right thing, to exercise their responsibility in placing the children's needs first, not the teachers or the unions or the political power brokers, but the children. They are completely safe at school. They are not safe at home. Thank you for your time. I'm welcome to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
So I have something to say. I can't remember if it was in December or January that school board meeting hurt where we were out with the children. Was that in January? Okay, so in January, we attended a school board meeting and the children, and I know I've brought this up before, but this is a more poignant time to bring it up, came in and were basically begging the schools to open back up and let them come back to school. And it was probably one of the sad, if I get a little emotional, it was the saddest thing I've ever seen. They were begging that school board to please let them come back and how sad they were and that they were lonely. And there, it wasn't one or two students. And those kids put on a program and they studied 78 students and asked them dozens of questions and which each one of them, everyone over off the chart was, they all wanted to come back to school and that they were sad. And you got these little kids that are sad and they're lonely. And yeah, there's homeschooling going on, but a lot of it's in the evening when the families do get home on those, you know, the kids that are able to stay home by themselves. The parents are still going to work, so just like the doctor said, you have all these children at home by themselves. And if you want to know the children are online, they're not online doing their homework. Because if you try to get on the internet to do anything, you can't get online about 11 o'clock. So you have them all searching god knows what for all hours of the day. And they're doing their homework at night when their parents get home and have the time to be able to do that. And it's just, they need normality. And also, I meet with Dr. Peters quite frequently and have asked him handfuls of times about this. And he's probably... and have asked him handfuls of times about this, and he's probably one of the smartest men I know. And just, just exactly what this doctor said, that is, is a farce as far as for these children. It just, and that they have, they need to go back to school. They have to go back to school. So with that being said, hello.
You know, we can't tell the hospital, and we can't tell the school district what to do. But what we're doing is representing the will of people in Lander County. Now, I'm sitting in this room with three other people that I taught with for years. And the three people out there are all saying, open the schools. I've seen a difference in the little guy that we're associated with since he's not on a regular schedule. And what Kathy said about these kids at home, they're not doing their work. Clark County and Washoe County are freaking out about the failure. Failure rate up to seventy-five and eighty percent? Holy cow. You took a year of education away from every student in Nevada. How many sports scholarships were lost by students in Nevada? If this were nineteen ninety-five, I'd be freaking out. We have to get some normalcy back into Lander County. I went to Reno. I could not believe it. It was a third-world country. And as far as the masks, you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. That's your right. But telling everybody you have to wear a mask, you have to do something? No, I'm standing on that.
Hey, Manhart, I want to echo everything he says, and then also just to make sure, because I've received phone calls, I've received emails, particularly about the school. He said it, they're run by their own elected officials. I just want to make sure I communicate to all the community citizens of Lander County, you hold them accountable. If you don't like something, you put them in office. You put the pressure on them. We're doing what we feel is right, but as far as when it comes to the school and the hospital, they have their own elected boards, so please understand that.
And it's the boards that dictate policy, not the superintendent, not the CEO. It's the board's prerogative and authority, so. I like the resolution the way it is. This Barrington thing, I'm not concerned about that at all. As far as two sides, I believe what's written in that report versus what's written in other reports. There's just no two ways about it.
The only thing on the Barrington Report Declaration was what I pointed out, that, that we have the World Health Organization and, you know, the others that are saying they don't agree. So because it's so contentious, I just felt if we took that out, that we would be representing both sides by taking it out. By putting it in, it looks like we are in favor of that one, and we haven't even considered the other. That's all. But everything you said is absolutely right. That's why we're doing this. And down at the bottom, when we talked about the school, which was just, as you pointed out, we're giving them our opinion, I just don't think saying no masks is quite the way to do it. I think that's a little overboard, and I would like to see us either take out the word no masks or say masks optional. That's all. I just ask for those two things.
I'd just like to point out, this whole thing, this whole COVID-19 thing has been contentious, and that's the point. You either believe or you don't believe, and you take a stand, one way or the other. And I believe that's what this board is doing, where we're taking a stand because we know best for our community. We're not Las Vegas. We're not Reno. We're not New York City. And, yeah, so.
I agree.
That is, that is all true, Commissioner, but on the other hand, we are, we are charged with the safety and welfare of our citizens. And as I pointed out, because this is such a serious matter, I didn't want us looking like we were all one-sided and all doing things for a political reason. I just tried to make it more fair on those two areas.
Well, I'd like to point out that we're, I understand that we're tasked with the safety, but we have our medical doctor of record for Lander County that's telling us it's time to move on. So it's not just willy-nilly. We're not just coming up with this.
But we are moving on. Everything he said was absolutely right on. You're, you're right, and we are moving on. But I just pointed out those other two things. It's up to the commission of what you'd like to do. Thank you.
And I think that it, you know, can be on record that, yes, if, I mean, obviously, masks are optional. If somebody feels the need to do that, then that's entirely up, that's their prerogative. Alicia, do you have something?
Um, Alicia Price, Cindy and Amy pretty much covered everything. I just want to say, I appreciate you guys giving us a choice and our freedoms back, and that you guys do work for us, and we appreciate that you're doing what your constituents want, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia.
Well, I would like to ask our counselor if there's anything legally that, that he has any comments on what we've been discussing.
Is Jerry Gilbert still here? I wanted to speak.
I'd like to hear from Joey Gilbert, and then I'd be happy to.
Hi, Mr. Gilbert.
Okay, thank you again, Joey Gilbert, for the record, attorney in Reno, Nevada, who's been spearheading this coronavirus response since March of twenty twenty. And I'm not really sure who it is that's bringing up the Great Barrington Declaration and citing the World Health Organization. But the bottom line is, the World Health Organization has looked at it about ten times, first saying that this was not spread by human-to-human contact, then saying masks didn't work, then saying masks did work, now they're back to saying masks work, as did Anthony Fauci. So the contentiousness is always going to be present. But I've been saying this since day one, and I'll say it again, well, everyone is entitled to their own opinion. You are not entitled to your own facts, and that is just the case. The bottom line is, the death rate of this virus is sixteen percent of one percent. Let me say that one more time. Sixteen percent of one percent, which puts it at or lower than the seasonal flu. So what's also important is that just as of January twenty-fifth, the World Health Organization came out and said, and I quote, that there was no need to wear a mask outside of a hospital setting. The quote was, if you do not have any respiratory symptoms, such as fever, cough, and runny nose, you do not need to wear a medical mask. When used alone, masks can give you a false sense of protection and can even be a source of infection when not used properly. So I'm very aware of the Great Barrington Declaration. I know many of the names that are signed on there are, are experts in their field. I've been following them closely. Whether you want to take that out or not, that's up to you. But the facts are the facts, and the science now is crystal clear. Children do not spread this disease. Children are not carriers. They're the least likely to face any serious harm or risk. And just like the good doctor said, teachers are safer in the classroom with their students than they are at home. That has been now approved in every state where the most severe and stringent lockdowns took place. The death rate was the highest. The infection rate was the highest. The unemployment rate was the highest. The suicide rates were the highest. The homicide rates, domestic battery rates, crime rates soared in all places where the lockdowns existed. So when you want to quote the Great Barrington Declaration, it is absolutely spot-on that the lockdown did not work and in fact made things much worse. So I think it's important to point that out. The next thing I'd like to point out is that now that the data is finally available for all to see, there was never any surges that were anything outside of the normal surges we see from the cold and flu season. And I say this because we were told so many times about the surge that was going to come from the holiday. The holiday surge from Thanksgiving, Black Friday, Christmas, New Year's Eve, MLK Day, the Super Bowl, Valentine's Day, and guess what? It never happened. Never once did those surges happen where they wanted to lock everybody down and get up there and declare, you know, these terrible things were going to take place. So one thing I want to bring up is that we are now, in the state of Nevada, the death rate has dropped by ninety-one percent in northern Nevada. Countrywide, it's about fifty-three percent, but in the state of Nevada, in northern Nevada, it's ninety-one percent. And because the coronavirus does not affect kids the same way it affects the flu, it's actually less deadly than the flu. So unless you were going to force your children in masks for flu season, which has never happened before, there's absolutely no reason whatsoever to have masks. Now, I, I agree, it's America. If you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. But children should be encouraged not to wear a mask. It is not healthy for them to wear a mask. It is not safe for them to wear a mask, and it's actually doing more harm than good. And again, this is not my opinion. These are facts. It's scientific data. So it's no longer up for discussion. It's no longer up for the coronavirus task force to discuss. The science is clear, and the data is in, and kids belong in in-person schooling without masks. The last thing I want to say with regards to sports, and I read this numerous times into multiple records, and it's the, the High School Association out of Florida showing now, and I quote, that participants in outdoor sport, in outdoor sports, excuse me, the use of masks for indoor sports results in similar COVID-19 transmission rates to those seen in outdoor sports. What does that mean in simple science? It means the masks do nothing. It's not about masks, about control. This is a virus, and a virus is going to virus. It's seasonal. Now, even Dr. Fauci has come out and called it seasonal, and it followed the exact line and peaks of the seasonal flu. So my point today is just to make it very clear that if we're going to actually sit here and debate science, the science and data that has now come out from literally every institution is showing quite clearly in the lockdowns, in the distance learning, stop with the masks because they're doing more harm than good. I understand it's become politically charged, but if you're going to base this on data, you're going to base this on science, you have to follow it. We can't just follow the CDC when we like what it says and then not follow it when we don't like what it says. And this is the first time in American history where emotions have replaced facts. And the fact of the matter is, like the good doctor said, there are treatments available. The governor banned hydroxychloroquine, but it became available July twenty-third in the state of Nevada. Any pharmacy will fill it. If they don't fill it, call me. I'll call them, and I promise you, they'll fill it within five minutes, because it's against the law not to fill it. So if you take anything away from my talk here today, it's that, that the science and data is absolutely spot-on. There is no longer a need, even the CDC says that rural counties should be back in school, and they should not be utilizing masks. If you're sick, stay home. If you don't feel good, stay home. But everybody else needs to get back to business because it's, it's hurting kids more than anybody else. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to talk about it.
Joey, this is Commissioner Art Clark. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, first thing I want to say is I hope I meet you someday because I'd really like to shake your hand. The second thing is, would you please tell the board about the hydroxychloroquine and the success rate?
Absolutely. So just so you guys understand where this came from, I became a coronavirus expert in the last twelve months because my parents were diagnosed with coronavirus in the early weeks of March. My father is a state doctor. Many of you guys might know Dr. Gilbert. He does all the rural county shared departments, heart and lung physicals. And my father caught the coronavirus well on the job, in a gown, in a mask, in a face shield. And if you talk to my father, who's not only an occupational doctor, but a trauma surgeon, and was a combat trauma surgeon with the Marine Corps, he's through the Navy, but if I don't mention Marine, you're getting in trouble. And my father will tell you very simply, son, the masks don't work. The only way masks works in a hospital setting because it prevents the surgeon from talking, from spreading diseases or particles into an open wound. Outside of that, it does nothing. So my father caught coronavirus, and the governor had just banned hydroxychloroquine, but we were able to get our hands on it, and my father was in two hours. That's about a hundred and twenty minutes. Fever dropped from one oh three point six to ninety-eight. His headache was gone. His fever and chills were gone. His body ache was gone. My mother, obviously living with my father, contracted the coronavirus as well. Within six hours, she was better. The governor did an emergency regulation banning hydroxychloroquine and citing a supply issue that did not exist. We filed a lawsuit. We found out that at the time of his ban, there were a little more than two-hundred-and-thirty thousand tablets of hydroxychloroquine in the state of Nevada. There was never a ban necessary, but he prevented a very, very necessary and effective therapeutic from being used. Once the emergency regulation expired July twenty-third, doctors have been able to prescribe it. And the good doctor from California said less than eighty percent hospitalizations, but it's actually eighty-five percent or higher not being hospitalized when treated with hydroxychloroquine. And if you know anything about the coronavirus, all the deaths were happening in the hospital. So hydroxychloroquine is available in the state, and to this day, many of you know that I represented the Nevada Osteopathic Medical Association, better known as NOMA, which was a group of doctors, over a few dozen. And since then, as a group and other private physicians, started treating with hydroxychloroquine. To date, to date, we have not had one hospitalization, and we're over a thousand patients. So you can say what you want about it, but again, emotions don't get to replace facts, and the facts are very clear. There are therapeutics and treatments available today in the state that can help anybody in a matter of hours, if not days, to full recovery. So hydroxychloroquine is available. You can go to AmericasFrontlineDoctors.com, and that's just Americas with an S, no apostrophe, FrontlineDoctors.com, and use any telepharmacy to have it on hand if you want it on hand, or any doctor can call it in in the state now. And if they don't, call me, and I'll get it for you. But hydroxychloroquine is very, very effective.
Thanks, Joey.
Anyone else? Any more public comment?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number twenty-two-one-oh-three as read by Commissioner Sparks.
All right, a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Art made the motion. Brian's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right, very good. Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break, please.
Muted.
All right, guys, let's get going so we can get through all this stuff. All right, going back to number four, for possible action, to approve/disapprove Policy Two Point One Six Point Four to purchase Made in America and giving local businesses first priority. So reading through this is pretty straightforward. Is there any comment for anyone?
No, I have no question.
Nobody has any?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Policy Two Point One Six Point Four to purchase Made in America and giving local business first priority.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right. So Brian made the motion. JR's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Moving forward. All right, number six. So for discussion and possible action for the viewing of, viewing and the chair's signature on the interlock, local agreement between Lander County and Northeastern Nevada Regional Development Authority and NRDA dated January first, twenty-twenty-one, that was previously approved by Resolution Two Zero Two-One-Dash-Zero-One on January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Okay. Mm-hmm.
The reason this is on is because you guys approved it, but the agreement was not in the packet as backup. So I felt it necessary that you should see what you approved, and if you want to change your mind or keep on, you know, keep it.
No, absolutely.
But you need to see, and public needs to see, what you approved.
Absolutely.
So that's why it's on.
Okay.
But you have reviewed the contract, and we're all okay.
Absolutely.
So as being that we just passed number four, and this is bringing in businesses, I mean, I just want to see what the commissioner's thoughts are of that. I mean, where would it leave us if they're trying to bring, like, if, uh, outside business, outside of our country, and to do business to compete against other American companies?
I'm not aware of anything like that.
Boy.
It's, it's in there?
No, I'm just saying that there's nothing that's precluding that from occurring. If there was a, if there was another country or foreign, like, foreign country that wanted to come in to do business, uh, that these guys solicited, that would be in competition with another American business, do you guys feel that's right?
No, I don't think it's right.
Yeah, I, I don't either.
And if that happens, I would move that we dissolve ourselves from N-R-D-A.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I just, I just.
Well, I, I, I wanna make sure that we don't cut off our nose. I, I understand and respect that.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we're not gonna approve it. I just, I just, I just wanna know what your guys' thoughts were to that question. Because that very well could happen. And then we would be supporting that, and it's kind of, kind of a, uh, in direct opposition of what we just passed that we support by American.
The way I understand it, Brian, is that they're, talking to Sheldon, my impression is that he wants to encourage people to come to the rurals to provide services. And there was no mention of.
Well, that's what I'm saying. There's no mention of where are these businesses coming from. There's nothing precluding somebody from coming in from a foreign country to do business here.
Yeah.
But you're also, with that being said, you have, and a lot of our mining companies are from out of the country as well. So by putting that statement, flat statement out there, is, uh, that blanket statement out there is also, we don't also wanna cut off our nose to spite our face.
Right.
So, uh, that, you have, that's second something we have to walk on very softly, that, um, we have, uh, the majority of the mining are that.
I'm not saying walk.
I know, I know, I know.
I'm just putting that one out there.
I know, and I totally respect that, but I think that, you know, they're looking for, um, uh, you know, stuff within the United States that are trying to expand. And yes, uh, every once in a while, there is something from outside the country that comes that where you can't find it in the country to be built. Um, like we had last year, as simple as, um, to try to have a, uh, axle on a trailer built, and it can come from Canada, you know, or one of the places, because nowhere in the United States built it. So I, I, I think that we don't obviously wanna get in the habit to, um, all of our businesses being outside the country. But in case that that has to happen, that's, we review all of that stuff at the time. But like I said, a lot of our, uh, bread and butter for this county is, uh, and I know what you're saying, and I'm not trying to. Uh, a lot of our bread and butter is from outside the country for this, the county, for net proceeds and things like that. So with that being said, you.
Kyla?
Well, we're still encouraging businesses to come here, but when they come here, you're saying if the parent company is somewhere else, but they're still here in Lander and employing people and paying their taxes and stuff.
Absolutely.
So they, they are local.
Yes.
Versus us buying them from Alabama if we don't have to.
Exactly, absolutely.
I, I mean, it's still encouraging businesses, and that's what N-R-D-A does.
Thank you for that perspective.
Uh, Commissioner, on thirteen under term, it says, and I quote, "Any member may terminate the member's participation in this agreement by the adoption of resolution to that effect by its governing body or other governing authority at any time."
Right.
So that's, so i- in case something like that happens.
And that we were disagreeing on something like that, absolutely.
We would certainly pursue that option.
Go ahead.
I think Patsy covered it fairly well, but just to kind of clarify that, is just, they become a local and part of our community, and that, that's the biggest, the biggest part of trying to get out and get those supply companies or manufacturers that then can support our local teams and become part and actually plant.
So, very good. Thank you guys for that. So now with that being said, we're, do, um, are they, since it's, we already approved it, what are we doing?
We, we actually approved the resolution.
The resolution.
So I'll make a motion that, um, that we approve the interlocal agreement, which is before us, um, with the notation that we have approved the resolution between Lander County and Northeastern Nevada Regional Development Authority dated January first, two thousand twenty-one, and authorize the chair to sign.
All right, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so Patsy made the motion. JR's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you. Moving forward. For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the Lander County to pay the Kingston Fire Department's physicals, purs, and pack?
So this was on the agenda last time. We'd, we'd mislabeled it and had it for Austin. Um, the county has paid in the past, but it hadn't been before the board. And is what I would like to do is make sure that we put some sort of stipulation on there that they will go through our county H R um, in order to get their physicals. And the reason being for that is what happens when they go get their physical there and we get the bill? If they aren't an employee of Lander County, we reject it. Because we don't know who it is that's asking for us to pay their physical. Um, so if they go through county H R, um, we can pay their physicals and, and move on as business should be. I know that it's caused a little bit of heartache there for the Kingston Fire Department.
So this can be retroactive if we've missed a couple that should have been paid for? Okay, um, 'cause I think we certainly, we have and we should, 'cause they're all part of the county, and they're volunteering for that whole, whole southern end. So I will make a motion that we approve, uh, for Lander County to pay for the Kingston Fire Department's physicals, purs, and also packs.
My second?
And do we wanna put in there to make sure that all requests are run through Lander County H R?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Part of the motion.
And Art, you'll second it? Okay, so, all right, um, Patsy made the motion. Art's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Moving forward. Uh, for discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the purchasing of the golf course and/or its, to continue with the current contract with new terms?
So the reason this is on the agenda, I know that, um, I did speak to our lobbyists, and they, their idea is that within the next six months, we should have an answer on our lands bill, which would include the golf course coming to the county and, uh, and multiple other land. So, I don't know that necessarily the, the right word to put in there is, uh, is for us to purchase that, 'cause I don't know that that's the desire. But the main reason for this is I would like to rewrite the contract that we have with our contract out there with the people that are running the clubhouse. And that would alleviate the auditors, us getting dinged on money changing hands so many times. Uh, the idea behind that is that they would receive all proceeds that go to cart fees, the, um, storage, the, um, passes, everything. They would receive all that, but they would just, their rent would significantly grow. Um, we pulled a bunch of data from, you know, years past. Our lowest year, I think, that the county made was about twenty-three thousand dollars on, on all that, and our highest was fifty-two. So, um, if we can negotiate a good, happy medium in there where they're actually doing business as, as a risk to a business, you know, they, if they run a good business, they, they make more money. If they run a poor business, well, then they lose. Um, but it would, it would alleviate us getting deemed by the auditors and get everything rolling down the, down the path the right way. The, the one caveat to that is, even if this passes, I can see Ted over here chomping at the bit. Um, even if that passes, we do have to get the, uh, the sign off by the BLM, um, as, as we have in the past to do this contract that we currently have. So once we get their, their verbal agreement, they cannot do it in writing, 'cause it does breach their contract, then we can proceed forward. Um, they, they've spoken with me, and they wanna be good neighbors. Um, however, you know, with the lands bill being where it is and, and where we are, that's, that's kind of where we stand right now.
So we're really basically doing nothing at this point?
Well, I'm just more or less asking you guys to approve this continued, uh, approve the continue with the current contract with new terms is what I'm asking you guys to approve. Um, not to purchase the golf course, but to continue with new terms contingent upon BLM's, um, approval at this time. Unless we, unless, unless there are new findings in, in, in the future, and then we can bring this back before you.
Yeah, I think it's important, and I think it's a great idea, because that was one of the areas we got dinged on our audit, was that cash changing hands, and that's one of the locations where it occurs.
Yeah, and it's been an ongoing thing for five years, I believe, of, of them dings on our audits, so.
So then now all this will be brought back to us?
Commissioner, I would only ask that in motion that, that you say this is, as, as Bertolo pointed out, is contingent on, on the oral permission from the BLM as far as terms.
Okay, so whoever makes that motion?
Does it have to be oral, or can it be written? I mean, if they sign it.
They, they won't do it.
Oh, they won't sign?
No, they've never given us anything in writing, even to the current.
That's why, that's why two or three of us from the county meet with them, so.
Okay.
So it's not a one-on-one situation.
I understand.
So we have witnesses on both sides.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
Any public comment?
Okay.
I just have more of a question, a comment. Kelly Sanderman, um, I guess, right now, I, I have a current contract, and it's supposed to be March first. So what is the timeline on something like this?
I'm hoping to get it back on the very next agenda.
Okay, just because opening the clubhouse was, you know, our contract says March first. I probably wasn't gonna do that with the weather being what it is right now, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna open it and then not know greensbea-, you know, I just want it to be.
For sure, and we're hoping that you can, you can set them to run, to run your business as need be, you know?
So a timeline would be probably the next commissioners' meeting?
Yes, and me and you would be obviously in contact very close if they pass this, so we can, uh, so we can get that rolling, 'cause you're gonna be having the one that signed up on it.
Okay, that was just it, so I should probably hold off on opening until then.
And, and just so the commissions are aware, I would be asking for another three-year. The, the contract that they assign currently is, was a three-year. Um, however, last year, I don't feel that they had a fair shake at it with COVID and everything that took place. So I think that a three-year, obviously with our thirty-day out, um, for both parties, um, would probably be beneficial.
Any further public comment?
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the pers- or, sorry, make a motion to continue the current contract with new terms, uh, with oral agreement from BLM.
Second.
All right, Art made the motion. Art's second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Muted.
Moving forward?
Unmuted.
For discussion and possible action to approve/disapprove the, uh, reorganization of the Lander County Recreational Center, which will then include A, parks, B, the golf course, C, rodeo grounds, D, the racetrack, E, motocross track, F, ball fields, G, skate park, H, um, event planning and coordinating, and I, civic center.
Okay, so I know that this, this one probably caused a little confusion, um, but is what I'm asking to do is put everything under, you know, our parks and rec all under one. Um, the thing that's most important for everybody to understand is this is not changing the management of, of any of it. Um, you know, I put the civic center in there because my plan is, is to, at the time Ms. Rita retires, to absorb that position and not, um, add back to that. The, uh, we've started doing these, um, the Christmas tree lighting, um, movies in the park. We have a lot of things that are starting to, to build in, in the county, and is what it's doing without having a structure to it is people don't know where to go or how to deal with it. The, the reason the rodeo grounds is on there because they have their advisory board, is because I know that they, last year, we gave them money. Legally, we cannot give an advisory board money to put on events. Um, so this would get around giving the advisory board money. We'd put line items in our budget this year for the commission to approve, so the advisory board can be that. They can be an advisory board at that point. They can say, well, we have, we believe we have the money. This is, this is our recommendations, and then we would have people in place to take that and, and run with it. Um, it would not change the, the structure of who is running everything. Donnie is still over, you know, all the, the parks and the pools and everything else, and Sean's still working in the rec center. It puts it all in one place, and is, my idea with this is to hopefully put, and this is speaking a little ahead of schedule, because I haven't done as much research as I should on the library yet, but to put them in the civic center and have one place where people can go schedule their reservations at the park. They can go find what all they need to do for insurance-wise and everything else to schedule a rodeo or anything at the racetrack. And we can let these, um, like the race association, they can actually be an association instead of a direct link to the commission, and then we have our people in the county that are running that, and they deal with them directly. It, so it should cut out a lot of the middlemen and the confusion, and get, it's gonna take a little time to get this thing rolling in the right direction to where everybody knows where to go and how, how this is working. But it also cuts out a bunch of grants that we're doing that are not per the law by trying to help our, out our community. I know our commission wants to help our community and give these grants out, but legally, we can't do that to advisory boards like we have in the past. So this is a way of being able to support our community legally and have people in place to manage these things as they go forward.
Okay, I've, I've got the concept, but where is it gonna go? Who's, who's gonna be the main person? Is it gonna be under Donnie?
No, they, so they'll probably be, well, they're, yes, they all fall under Donnie. Everybody falls under Donnie, obviously, and then under me.
But for the public, where, where's the public gonna go?
The civic center. The public would, would, would go to the civic center. That's where these positions will be based at of.
Okay.
I like it. I like that idea.
I like the idea too.
It's very, uh, people know, do you wanna do anything in the community, this is where you go, this is who you talk to, this is who, this is where you get a schedule.
And, and so you guys are aware of, of my plans with, with paying for this, 'cause there's, there's two positions here that, that I'm requesting that'll be on the budget. Um, one is, is through attrition. There's gonna be, then that takes however long Ms. Rita wants to work. But, um, if we have anything in-house, I know that the same thing happens. If we have somebody leave over there at the, at the pool right now or at the rec center, that we have a little bit of room there to possibly attrition that one out. We're gonna see how this works with the kids going back to school and, and getting everybody back to rolling. Um, but then, then the other, the other position that I plan on is if we can get our own library, which may cost a bunch upfront, but that's a hundred and thirty-two or thirty-three thousand dollars a year that would come back to the county and, and help pay for a little more than one of these positions. So, so these, this isn't me trying to grow big government. I wanna make sure that, that the board and the community is aware of that, that, that this is the structure that I wanna build, and everybody have somewhere to go and, and kind of still stay at an even keel.
Yeah, and I like that idea. I, that's something I've, I've been in favor for and looked at is purchasing the library and owning it ourselves rather than contracting out to somebody else. I, I think it's a great idea, so.
Hundred and thirty thousand dollars over ten years, a million bucks, we'd have a heck of a library.
A lot of books.
So, very good.
Well, I make a motion that we approve the.
Well, do you wanna try, is there any public comment on that before we go forward?
Yeah?
Hello? Okay.
Ted?
Is there public comment there? That might have been Austin.
Muted. Unmuted.
I'll make a motion that we approve the reorganization of Lander County Rec Center, which will then include parks, golf course, rodeo grounds, racetrack, motocross track, ball fields, skate park, events planning and coordinating, and civic center.
All right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it, but also with the notation that with the exact layout as, as our county manager has described it as far as chain of command and all that.
Okay.
Yes, no chain of command.
Okay, very good. So Art made the motion, and Brian's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. So for possible action to approve/disapprove the, uh, appointment of two individuals to serve on the Battle Mountain Livestock Event Advisory Board, which currently has two vacancies. New terms are, um, from July one, two thousand twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, uh, uh, and to consider all of the following applicants, uh, Mike Craig and Rita Rogers. Now, are we wanting to do those separately, or can we do them together? Is anybody opposed to doing them together?
No, I'm not opposed to these two being together.
I just wanna make sure. All right, uh.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of two individuals, being Mike Craig and Rita Rogers, to serve on the Battle Mountain Livestock Event Center Advisory Board, uh, which currently, actually, the new terms from July first, two thousand twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
So Brian made the motion. Art's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you guys very much. All right. For possible action to approve/disapprove the appointment of one individual to serve on the Lander County Board of Equalization, which currently has, um, two vac- vacancies. Uh, new terms from July first, two thousand twenty, uh, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and to consider all of the following applicants, um, to include Kimberly Buffington?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint Kimberly Buffington to serve on the County Board of Equalization from the term July first, two thousand twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Your second?
I'll second it. I'll second.
So, Patsy made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Absolutely no.
Okay, so, all right. So, uh, for discussion and possible action to approve, uh, disapprove any or all recommendations from the Duke Group Archi-, um, Architecture Regarding the Austin Youth Center.
Hey, Robert, I think there's a gentleman on the phone for this one. Pete, are you on the phone there? Well, maybe not. Um, so, I guess I'll, I'll start off with this, so this is Austin, uh, Youth Center that's been going on for three years. Uh, we have a bunch of options in here on moving forward, or how we'd like to move forward, if we'd like to pursue some of these grants, or if the county would like to start budgeting for it. Um, pulled up a bunch of old pictures and have a bunch of different site plans, the property owner next door, I've not personally spoke to, but, um, I believe Anna has, and he's, and Pete has as well, and they're willing to donate that property to the county if we're willing to, uh, upgrade this, this building, you know, back to kind of historic value. They have all the property alongside of it that they have updated to historic Old Austin, looks really nice, and I figured that a lot of this is decisions that the commission as a whole needed to make. Pete, my, uh, myself and Patsy and Anna have been having, uh, a lot of meetings and he has a lot of ideas, but I didn't feel that it was appropriate for us to make them decisions, I think this is a commission decision.
Maybe Anna can, uh, explain to us the option, the proposal, the use option.
That's what we were, uh, hoping Pete was gonna be on the hornboard.
I'm, I'm sure, yeah, one of the things is, of course, uh, the, the mess that we're in has, uh, has caused our construction costs to go through the, the roof, and that's true with anything, if you're seeing the new buildings and what's gone on. So, um, there are some, some, like you said, options available, but the bottom line is, it's still gonna cost us more money than we thought it was gonna cost us, even though we, we are eligible for some types of, of, uh, help, you know, with different things along the way, but it's a, a big commitment, so it needs to come back before all of us to see. And the pictures, actually, um, were, uh, that are in your book is, is exactly what the old fire and ladder place looked like, and the difference is, as he was explaining, is we are going to, um, we're, we're short a door, first of all, legally, we should have had another door, there's only one way in and out, so that will look like to go out towards the patio and perhaps do something there, so if Pete's on, I'll, I'll let Pete and Anna take over.
His name is Pete, Pete, are you on? All right. So if you wanna move forward with your presentation?
We can apply today for things like tables and chairs, you know, I mean, it's a community-type center, so we would need some furniture in there, possibly a podium, maybe some AV equipment, studio platform, uh, since it's a, still operated as a youth center, we could do a children's computer lab, and then there's a kitchen associated with it, so kitchen equipment would also be a really good use of, of this funding. It just has to be a hard asset with at least a five-year minimum lifespan. And USDA will fund up to seventy-five percent of, of the request, or not, or not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. And so if we, if we get into that program, we just have to show how we're meeting the twenty-five percent match, which can be hard. The next two grants are, uh, for building, the project. The first one is administered through the, through SHPO, but it's the Commission for Cultural Centers and Historic Preservation Grant, and it's called CCCHP. It's been around forever. Um, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two grant cycle will open this November, and they typically, the, the successful grants are, are funded the following November, so we wouldn't have money until November of twenty-twenty-two. That's because they, and we'll go over the schedule, but they go through a process where they sell the bonds and all that, so it takes a while. Um, in, in terms of, of amount of funding available, they awarded, uh, twenty-five grantees, they divided up three million dollars in the last cycle, uh, but it's actually going to increase on the, on the next cycle, uh, up to four million dollars, so it's pretty, you know, it's a nice pot of money. I mean, you know, you can get several hundred thousand dollars, uh, if you're a successful applicant. The hesitation, they had a little hesitation because we were doing a reconstruction, um, and so they requested that, that I email the commission chairman to explain the proposal, uh, sometime between now and, and when they meet in August to begin the process, which I will do, um, i- i- depending on what the commission decides. The second program that's available is through the governor's office of economic development, and the, the, the program that we would be eligible for is Community Development Block Grant. I talked to, played around several times with Jessica Sanders, she is the CDBG program administrator, and she said that the program is eligible, or the building is eligible for funding. That grant cycle will open up this July, and the projects will be funded, uh, the money will be, you know, available to draw down on July one, twenty-twenty-two. A match is not required for this one, but is encouraged, and I can tell you, having done this for several different, um, you know, organizations, you, 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 you know, a match, it's very competitive, um, uh, you know, grant application. If you do plan to submit an application, she did remind me that the county grants administrator, as well as whoever your design professional is going to be, will have to attend a mandatory training at the end of May of this year. Uh, it, it will be a virtual, she said this time, and she did identify Laura Duvall, uh, the county assessor, as the county grants administrator. I don't know if Laura Duvall has to do it, or whether she can delegate it to somebody in her office, but, um, just you have to be aware of that there is the training we have to go through. And then the other, you know, my experience with GOED has been very positive, they're, it's a, it's a wonderful program, it, it's a grant, and they, you know, they, they give nice chunks of money, but they're heavily involved in the bidding or procurement process. Uh, they have to review and approve every, you know, the, the bid documents before they go out, um, and then they're involved in the debarring of the bidders as they, you know, and writing in the contract, and there's federal prevailing wage requirements and things like that, so it, it's, it's pretty involved, but, you know, we've done it for several different counties and, and, and organizations, and it's a good process. So, in terms of the project timeline, um, I, I put it, I put together two scenarios, depending on if you wanted to go for the CCCHP, or the CDBG, or even if you wanted to go after both of them. Uh, the USDA one is kind of not really relevant to the timeline, we can do that whenever you want, if you decide to go that route. So, the, the important thing about the grants, though, is, um, it, it delays the project because we can't really go out to bid and start construction and spend any money until the agreements are in place and the grants are funded. So, if our grant applications are successful, I'm estimating it's going to add as much as a year to the project's schedule. So, um, you know, you have to keep that in mind, but it's, both of those grants are, you know, essentially free money. Uh, the CCCHP project's schedule would be the longest. The grants don't open until November one of this year, so beginning of this year, toward the end of this year. We just have to submit a letter of intent in December, uh, and, and what I've done is also sort of targeted when plans, you know, the latest the plans could be done, uh, and ready to go out to bid, because what you'd want to show on both grant cycles is a shovel-ready project. So, you know, by the end of this year, we, we need to be ready to go out to bid if we go after these grants. The applications for the CCCHP would be due in February, and then in June of that year, uh, there, uh, there's a grant hearing, it's a mandatory that we attend, and they actually award the grants at that hearing. So in June of twenty-twenty-two, we know if we got any, you know, how much money, if any, we, we received. Uh, then we have to kind of sit back because the state goes through a process of selling or bundling up the, everything and selling bonds, so money, you know, the, the, it's usually not funded until November of twenty-twenty-two, a year after the grants open. Um, so we could, as soon as the grants are funded, it takes some time to write up all the agreements, and the, the records and covenants and, and things like that. So it's pretty, it'd be pretty aggressive, but in, hopefully within a month, we could, you know, we could actually issue plans for bid, and then start construction early in twenty-twenty-three, weather permitting, of course. Um, and then we're giving a eight-to-nine-month construction period, which we could talk about, uh, when we get closer to it. The CDBG project's schedule would be shorter, uh, again, in May, the mandatory training would open up. In July, they open up, uh, it's a, a virtual, um, platform called Zoom Grants, it opens up, and we submit the ideas, and they, they look at it and tell us if we're eligible. And then in December, uh, again, we would, you know, we'd prepare plans and be ready to go to bid. In February, the applications are due. Uh, that, that also coincides with the same February, February due date for the CCCHP grant. Um, in April, they would award the grants, but on this one, they're actually a little bit quicker, they would fund it as of July one, twenty-twenty-two, the beginning of that fiscal year. Um, we can't go out to bid on July second because unfortunately, we, we have to submit everything to them, and it usually takes them a couple of weeks to, at least ten days minimum, but usually I find it's been about fifteen days or, or twenty days for them to review everything and approve it, and, and, um, get all the prevailing wage requirements and date, you know, bacon, base bacon requirements, and incorporate all that. Then we have a minimum three-week bid period and, and all that, so we really can't start until September or October of next year for construction, and again, complete, you know, spring or, or early summer of twenty-twenty-three. Any questions? Can, could everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, we've heard you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Pete. This is, this is, yeah, this is Pat. Um, so, well, hi. We'll skip the first one, um, the one that maxes out at fifty thousand for all of the, uh, the eligible fixtures, because you said we can do that anytime. So we're really looking at the two, we're looking at SHPO, and we're looking at GOED, and you're saying that we can put in for both of those?
There's, there's no reason you can't apply for multiple grants, there's no exclusion on that, so.
And if we went in, um, you're recommending we go in for the full amount right now and have them look at the, what, nine hundred thousand?
Well, so, okay, so neither of them will fund the full amount, so that, that's why I'm saying if we, we, we need to, we need to continue to refine the budget amount, get it down as closer to the six hundred, or, or even lower than we can, you know, identify any money that the county might be willing to pay, and then we go for grants for the remaining balance of it. So, so if the budget's five hundred thousand and the county, I'm just using raw numbers, and the county says, hey, we'll pay half, then we need to find funding for two hundred and fifty, you know, you know, between two fifty and three fifty, that's probably a realistic amount to go after grants for either of these two things, but I, I'm not sure any of them would fund like nine hundred thousand, I'd have to look at the past history of that.
Okay, well.
That's a pretty high amount because...
Yeah, well, we had, we had the three hundred thousand that we put aside, so we, we have that in, and we're looking at budget time coming up, but, um, all this falls into the next, the next year's budget anyway, so, um, we could go ahead with these two grants and go forward if, if the commission wants to do that, and we go forward with the amount that we, um, that we, yeah.
I don't recall setting aside money last time.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did, yeah. Um, but because we're also concerned about construction costs and everything that could skyrocket, you know, next year when we're still ready. But for right now, what we have to decide is the commission of, of what we're going to do with the grants, and so it's...
So, I, uh, one comment, I thought we set money aside as well. When we got Pete's first bill, we do not have any money set aside for that, so if the, if that was the intent, it was either never rolled over, or we do not have anything in place at this time.
Okay, I wrote down three hundred thousand because that's what I remember.
And that's what I thought, too.
Yeah, I thought we put aside three hundred thousand, which I thought was a lot of money, but, you know, you know.
Yep, just, just so the commission is aware, we, we don't have it in our budget, so where, where that went, you know.
Well, can you, can you look back in the record and make sure that we...
We, we did. Yesterday, we, uh, we went through it thoroughly, and we could not find the money, but I just want to make the commission aware.
Well, we did approve it, so we can, we've got a new budget coming up, so we'll make sure we've got where the money is from, yeah.
We need to find that. I remember three hundred, three of us remember.
Yeah, I, I know we went with three hundred because that's, that was the original estimate, and we wanted to save it.
Do you guys, do you guys recall in what meeting? Was it during the budget setting?
I'm pretty sure it was during budget, yeah.
Okay, because it may just got missed in the, in the line items, um, we've changed finance since then, but there, and there was a few other projects in public works that were missed as well, so, um, that, that could have happened during there, and it's just not as a line item, it's not that we lost the money and nobody knows where the money is. It's just, yes, it's just not in the line items, per se.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure as heck willing to supplement what the grants don't provide as long as the grants are providing as much as we provide.
Fifty, fifty?
So if we get a grant for three hundred, we have three hundred, we have six hundred, let's get it done.
Did you have something?
Do you remember, Anna, if we put money aside?
I, I, I remember that, but I don't know who, I do remember the conversation, but I don't know anything other than that.
It must have been missed somehow. I thought we wanted more information before we agreed on the amount.
And that might be, too.
That's what I remember, but I could be wrong. I, I think we put...
Okay, for right now, for where we are, though, if we want to go ahead with this, um, we want to go ahead with the two, and Pete, you're going to help us on these grants, right? Yes, yes.
So, um, yeah, so if I, uh, I, I will confirm that, uh, Pat emailed me, and we spoke last, toward the end of last year, sometime last year, and, and you did say that we're three hundred thousand set aside, I, I, you know, that's the number I've always been working forward on, knowing we were going to have to supplement that, um, but that's a nice, you know, that's a nice, what they would consider a match for the grants, so, you know, from here on, we just need to keep, you know, sharpen our pencil to get this thing down to the six hundred or lower, and not to nine hundred, which I think we can do, again, I always try to be very conservative.
Well, we'll check our, our history, our history on that, but for right now, then we want a motion on, um, us proceeding with the, the two grants, with one with SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, and the one with GOED, the Governor's Office of Economic Development, and I'll make a motion that we do that.
Second.
Motion made by, um, Pat, he said by our poll favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good.
Okay, we'll tweak up the amounts and work with you on that, then, Pete.
All right, we're going to take a little bit longer, about a, what do you want to do, ten minutes? Ten minutes, please? Thank you.
Approve/disapprove one of the following proposals for Lander County Courthouse Fire Sprinkler System, overhead fire protection in the amount not to exceed, um, one thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars annually, recommended by the Building Department and supported by the county manager, or two delta in the amount not to exceed five thousand seven hundred and ten annually. So we'll look at that to see. All right, you're on.
Hannah Panola with the Building Department. Uh, overhead's been our people for the five years we've been here, and it's time to renew. Delta came to me and wanted to be considered, and that's why they're on there.
All right.
What's your recommendation?
Overhead.
So this, this is for the maintenance, right?
The quarterly maintenance of the fire system.
Strictly maintenance, okay, because it wasn't quite, it wasn't quite as clear on the agenda, but when I went through everything, I thought, oh, yeah, okay, we're cool with maintenance. But I have a question, um, where are we with right now?
Overhead.
Okay, because in one of them, um, it referred to also the sheriff's office.
They do the sheriff's office as well, but they're not, this isn't part, the sheriff's office has their own contract.
But theirs is a one-year contract with an automatic renewal, it looks like, in this one.
This is what they're proposing, but this, we've been with them, and it's always been a two-year with no automatic renewal. This isn't the first contract.
So they're wanting to go from a two-year to a one-year automatic renewal, correct?
I'm get, yeah, that's what it says.
Well, when I see automatic renewal, I figure automatic renewal every year unless we stop them.
Right, it's going to be, I would hope you would approve the contract that they had before.
Okay, I was just, I was just questioning on the link.
Oh, that's their deal, it's not what our deal is.
So what do we want? Do we want to do the two-year like we always do?
Yes.
So is that in the, having the verbiage corrected to a two-year, or...
Yeah, that's, um, I don't know of any contract that we have right now that is automatic renewing, I think that the commission has always been against that, that, that this has been...
So are we going to have them correct the verbiage and bring it back, or we're doing a, what are we, how are we doing this?
I, I would, I would table it and have them rewrite that to where we can approve it as...
Yeah, the way it's worded, it says, "The term of this agreement shall be one year from the date of acceptance and shall automatically renew each year thereafter until either party terminates said agreement with a thirty-day notice."
So I would, you know...
Okay.
Go ahead and table and come corrected, just bring it back, and we'll get it taken care of.
Okay. Same with the rec, the next one?
I would assume so. With fif, uh, with, uh...
Fourteen and fifteen.
Fourteen and fifteen are the same.
Thirteen.
Or thirteen, I'm sorry, thirteen and fourteen.
I'll take care of that right now.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Oh, it's the rec center, it's fourteen.
We probably need to read fourteen in and just make the...
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and read fourteen in, um, for possible action to approve/disapprove one of the following proposals for the Lander County Rec Center Fire Sprinkles, um, Fire Sprinkler System. Um, one is overhead fire protection in the amount not to exceed one thousand thirty dollars annually, recommended by the Building Department and supported by the county managers. Second is delta in the amount not to exceed three thousand seven hundred and fifty annually. So on this one, we're going to head and have the contracts corrected to a two-year, so they'll be tabled and being brought, brought back. Okay, all right? So, um, so Wood Rogers' Master Plan Update from Wood Rogers, discussion and possible action on how to proceed based on Wood Rogers' recommendations and Lander County's existing and proposed goals concerning the master plan. Okay.
Derek, are you on the phone here?
Uh, I'm here, I'm talking.
Okay.
Whatever you guys want.
I think Kyla's getting set up for you, and then we will go.
Muted. Unmuted.
Our point all set up?
Yes.
Great. Uh, this is, uh, Derek Kirkland with, with Wood Rogers, uh, been helping, uh, Bert and Kyla on the master plan update. So we wanted to, I think we're at a point now where we can kind of give you an update as to, to where we're at and kind of where things are headed, um, and also, we're kind of at a good stage now to get some feedback on kind of the, the goals and policies, um, moving forward. Um, so with that, we'll go on to the, uh, the first slide here. Um, and, uh, feel free to bug me if, if you want me to stop, um, talk about something specific, and also, um, I'll try to coordinate with Kyla on changing the slides, so apologize for any inconvenience there. Um, so really, what, what we're trying to do with the master plan is, is really trying to kind of pivot some organization, um, try to make this thing, you know, easy read and an easy document to, to understand in terms of vision, and also to, uh, implement. Um, so moving on to slide two, um, just some of the, the different structure changes that we're looking at making, um, it's really kind of reducing the overall number of chapters, um, and kind of organize them, uh, so that it reads a little bit easier. Um, instead of an introduction, we'll have more of an executive summary that kind of talks, talks a little bit about, uh, the key stats in terms of like population, forecast, um, some of those things, and, and we do have, uh, E and R who's helping us with some of that. Um, and then kind of the, the biggest change I'll kind of talk about is, is, uh, is going to the land use section, kind of moving that up front, because most of the time with these master plans, that's, that's kind of the, the moment that sticks out the most. Um, and so we like to have that kind of up front, and then also what we're looking to do is, um, right now you had separate area plans for Austin, Battle Mountain, Kingston, plus the, the land use section, and so we're creating one land use section, and then the Austin, Battle Mountain, and Kingston plans will live within, um, that section, we're actually looking to kind of simplify those a little bit, um, get rid of some of the duplication. So you basically, in terms of layering, layering, you'd have kind of the overall land use plan for the county, and then we kind of focus in on each of these areas, um, within the same chapter. Um, looking at, uh, concentrating on resources, uh, pulling that, keeping that kind of as its own chapter, but pulling water resources into that. Um, and then housing and economic would actually get separated, separated out as their own, uh, um, as their own chapters, and just, we like to do that just mainly because it's, they are a little bit different, and so having their, their own chapters allows them to have their own goals and policies and those types of things. Um, and then kind of combining some of the public facility stuff into a single chapter, um, and then also adding, um, kind of an implementation plan, and really, implementation plans, we try to kind of organize the goals and policies, um, and then kind of work with staff, kind of identify some, some implementation strategies going forward. Um, so nothing too complicated, more of a, a, of kind of a checklist, if you will. Um, okay, so moving on to, uh, slide three, uh, the executive summary, um, you know, a couple trends that we have worked with you and R on, just to kind of point some things out as we're moving forward in the, uh, that we saw are kind of important to note, um, as we continue on with the, the master plan update, population trends, basically from twenty thirteen to twenty nineteen, um, you know, Battle Mountain saw a pretty good increase in population, but notably, I'm sure you guys are well aware of this, um, some declines in both Austin and Kingston, um, especially in the, the Austin area.
Derek?
Um, yes.
Derek, excuse me, um, yeah, on that Kingston one, did you have a total of what it is now?
Um, you know, you and, I, I apologize, I don't, um, you and R is working through some of that data, and so they, they were, they were comfortable showing some of the trends, but they, they're still kind of working on the numbers. And so these are very draft numbers at this point, it's just more to show you kind of the trends, to give you an idea of kind of a snapshot of, anyways. Does that make sense? Um, so moving on, and, and we'll have, once we get, uh, more on the executive summary, we'll have all these numbers kind of dialed in and have some new updated numbers, but, um, just kind of giving you a, a glimpse of what we're finding to date. Um, one thing that we noted was, uh, there is growing income, which is good, um, overall a twenty-one percent increase, I would, and then general, I mean, just kind of one thing that we, you know, will note is just that, you know, and I don't think this is a unique situation for Lander County, I think this is something we're seeing statewide and just, uh, region-wide, um, it's just the lack of available housing. Um, and I, I think that stands true for a lot of different areas, but, um, you know, obviously with the decrease in population in the Austin area, uh, we would expect to see, um, increasing vacancy rate. Um, but the, the one that we did note is, uh, the decrease in, in the Battle Mountain vacancy rate to almost zero, meaning there's basically no housing stock left, um, which I'm sure you're familiar with, um, and then basically Kingston kind of remained the same for the most part in terms of vacancy rates. Uh, moving on to slide four, um, so kind of looking at employment, that's another area we'll look at and kind of focus in on the economic development chapter, and again, you and R's been doing some work with you guys on that, um, so we're not going to recreate the wheel there, we're just going to have them kind of help us with some of those things. Um, and on employment, um, as, as I'm sure you know, it's probably not a surprise, uh, kind of employment is focused around kind of five major sectors that make up almost eighty percent of all the jobs, um, in Lander County. Um, those being the agriculture, forestry, fishing, mining industry, um, at the top at, at just over forty percent, um, educational and health, health services at twelve percent, kind of the second one there, and then, um, kind of the rest broken into the construction and retail trade, um, and then as well as the entertainment, recreation, accommodation, food services industry. Uh, any questions? This is kind of a, a quick highlight of just some of the things that we'll be showing in the executive summary, but is there any questions on any of this? Okay, uh, go ahead and move on to the land use section, so this is, uh, slide number five. Um, so a couple things here that we've been kind of focusing on, um, you know, obviously this is kind of the big cleanup chapter for us, um, we've been working with some of the data, and we found that there's, you know, there is some missing data pieces, and so it's taking us a little bit longer to kind of sift through some of the GIS data, and, and we have it on our schedule here in the next couple weeks to sit down with Kyla and, um, the assessor's office to talk more about some of the data and try to, our ultimate goal is to get the data as part of the land use section kind of cleaned up, to have that, have that going forward. Um, but kind of the big things that I talked about is moving the area plans back into, um, the plant section, it's all tied together, um, focusing on cleaning up the map, um, right now it's a little bit confusing in terms of, you know, is it master plan land use designations, or is it zoning designation? Um, so we're kind of working through some of that stuff, um, kind of cleaning that up, and then, um, looking at, there's some areas in the master plan where we feel like, you know, there's almost like the boundary standards living in the master plan, which is typically not how you'd want to do that, because your master plan is, is high-level policy-type stuff, and then your zoning code is where you want those development standards to live, because that's basically zoning, zoning code is law, um, and so that helps you kind of enforce some of your, your development standards going forward. Um, so just a, you know, a little bit more on that, um, as we get through kind of this master plan piece, we'll have some recommendations, um, that will follow as part of this, um, on updates to your zoning code, mainly focused around some of those development standards. Um, but it's really the, you know, the difference between your master plan and zoning, master plan is your visionary document, a little kind of broad brush, uh, where zoning, um, is an ordinance, it's law, um, and so that's where it's, it's making a separation between the two, I think is important, and, and from our initial review of your current master plan, it's a little messy on where the break happens between the master plan and... the break happens between the master plan and zoning. And I think that's created some of the issues on some of the development projects. So moving on, slide number seven, the land use goals. So one of the things that we've done, and I think you received in your packet, was we kind of organized all the goals and policies. And then what we've done with our presentation, which you also have, is basically came up with just some draft goals for each of the new elements. And I think really what we're trying to do is get some feedback from staff, from the commission, you know, from the public and the stakeholders, in terms of, you know, are these goals that were, that you previously had and that were proposing, you know, are we in line with where you guys would like to head or is there comments, changes, things you would like to see differently? This is really kind of our chance with the master plan to kind of get the goals and policies right, moving forward over the next 10, 20 years, and just make sure that those are outlined in the front of each of these chapters. Because that's kind of essentially from a commission level, I mean, that's the most important piece in these master plans is, you know, putting these goals right for the communities. And so I won't go through all these goals right now. I mean, I think you have them, I think, you know, what we're looking for is, is feedback you have. And I don't know, Kyla, if there's a process you want to describe for that, but typically what we do is give everybody a couple of weeks to go through them and then usually give comments back to staff within that two week period. Is that something you want to talk about more, Kyla, or if that works for everyone?
I think the question is, Commissioners, how you want to go forward with providing feedback on those goals? If those seem to be aligned with Lander County or if there's something that maybe anybody wants to give feedback to have them go in a different direction if it doesn't fit Lander County, is what he's asking in that aspect. Y'all have my email, I guess, if you have suggestions.
Where is this, where is this done? And I like to show the separation between each community, so that there's a breakdown between each community instead of just one flat.
Well, they listed a whole lot of goals, we just kind of wanted to know which ones, all the order of importance, what's important to us, right?
It's really just, you know, and I, you know, obviously today, we're just, I'm giving you kind of a high level overview as to what these goals could look like or what they, you know, draft form. But ultimately, you know, having everyone spend a week or so with them and give back to staff on where the priorities lie, I think is important going forward, and just so we're all on the same page.
One thing I'd like to know is when, where, and how we got off course on the septic and development up here in Battle Mountain. I'd really like to know when that started, the beloved loophole.
Okay, we do have, you know, we've been talking with staff a little bit about that and doing some, you know, I've already shared some standards that other communities have adopted because of similar issues. And I think that's something that we do have, you'll see further in some of these chapters with goals, we do have some goals that are specifically related to that.
Yeah, because no matter what the county does, they can't not, they cannot supersede what the state said, and that's 99 for 640 acres. So I'd like to see how we get that straightened out, too.
Okay. All right, so moving on from the goals, and these goals in the land use section were goals that were already listed and our kind of first glance at them was they still are applicable for the most part, so that's why we didn't really propose any changes at this time, figured we'd let everyone take a look at them and see if there's any specific changes that you'd like to see. Moving on to slide eight, talking about the, kind of the overall master plan maps. So we've gone through and started playing with the GIS data and trying to organize some of these, and one thing that we found is that there are some gaps in the data that we have, you know, which isn't surprising for rural areas, but one thing we'll note is that there was some land use around the community areas, but as you get away from the community areas, then, you know, the data starts to, we start to lose data. And so that's where we'll have to kind of focus in with Kyla and the assessor's office and try to figure out, you know, how we want to handle those areas and, you know, typically in a lot of communities, they'll just be identified as rural. They could be identified as open source, depending on if there's a resource you're trying to protect. So there's different approaches to it, and so that's all the things that we're working on, what we're going to be working on over the next couple of weeks with staff is to try to finish cleaning up some of these maps and the data. Moving on to slide nine, this gives you just kind of a overview of Battle Mountain and kind of the land use. And again, these land use maps will be based on kind of the current zoning that's underneath, but it gives you a broader category, instead of having all the zoning designations, it gives you a broader category from a master plan perspective of how the land's being planned for and what the vision for the land is over the next 20 years. You know, are there areas where we need to kind of adjust some of the plant use because there's development patterns that you'd like to see a little bit differently? And so we're going to be kind of working with staff on that, but I'll, you know, also would like to get, kind of the next level, the next presentation we provide, hopefully we'll have some of that cleaned up and then be able to have a bigger discussion on if there should be changes to the actual land use. Moving on to Austin land use maps, you know, again, this can kind of give you an idea where, how some of the land use patterns look like out there. Kingston, moving on to slide 12 with the zoning map overlay, so this kind of gives you an idea, you can see like the zoning has a lot more designations broken into kind of more detailed, whether it's different types of commercial, industrial, different levels of density for residential. It gets a lot more into the weeds in terms of what's regulated, but you can see that we're missing a lot of data for other areas of the county outside of the community. So we're just trying to work on getting this cleaned up so that at the end of the day, you have, you know, you have really good GIS data and some good maps in terms of master plan versus zoning. Moving on, just to the different communities here, slide 13 is kind of the Battle Mountain area. And again, you know, without zooming in, getting a whole lot of detail, you could just see the difference here where you have just a lot more designations and different things going on. And so we're kind of organizing that and kind of looking at that with staff to see if there's any changes that potentially need to be made. But particularly with zoning, we wouldn't be changing any of the zoning at the master plan level. Gives you an idea for the kind of the Austin area, so this, these maps would just be, you know, really just having an idea just to show you how kind of what's going with some of the data and how they'll be cleaned up and incorporated into, you know, not only the master plan, but for staff's reference as well with the GIS data. So moving on to slide 16, getting into the conservation and natural resource development. I think the biggest one here is we're looking at providing some new updated data, new maps of where the resources exist. You know, breaking things into living versus non-living resources, public lands, kind of shifting some of the public lands discussion to the land use section. And then incorporating the water resources conservation chapter in here as well. And I think this is one section, you know, where we could potentially be looking at more discussion on some of the septic stuff. And so we'll be continuing to work with staff on that as we kind of get through, moving forward on these chapters. But here, just kind of just giving you an idea of some of the thoughts here on some potential changes to these goals. And again, these are very draft and just trying to, you know, get this information out so that we can start getting feedback on it. In terms of suggested changes, are we missing something? Does something not work anymore? Maybe it just needs to read a little bit differently, those types of things. But this is kind of, with these goals broken out by each element, is basically just looking to get kind of direction on what the priorities are for the county relative to each of these elements. So kind of moving on here, we've incorporated some of the water resource stuff into this, these goals. But again, just gives us kind of a high level overview from the commission's perspective on what the priorities are. Any questions on the conservation and natural resources section?
I don't think so.
Okay. Moving on to slide 19, housing. So again, we've broken this one out into the ground section. And some of the things we'll be looking at here is just based on, you know, housing based on where the future and projected growth is lying and obviously Battle Mountain's, the major population center there. But we'll be looking at, working with you and R on some existing inventories and looking at different opportunities and strengths for housing in Lander County. Some of the goals, there were no housing goals in the previous master plan, it's just some simple goals here that, you know, again, just examples of things we've seen in other similar communities. And so, you know, obviously looking for feedback on these, these are just draft at this point and we'll be looking for some feedback on these as well. Any questions on housing?
No.
All right. Economic development chapter, again, something we've kind of pulled out and I know you guys have been working with Dr. Steinman and you and R on what, all the stuff that they're doing. And so we're pulling a lot of that information, they'll be helping us with this chapter. And so really, just looking at goals, again, there were no goals proposed in the previous master plan, but we know that you guys have this economic development vision and so what we've done is kind of worked with Fred's group to create, kind of recap some of those goals, but in a more simplified version for the master plan. And so that's where you'll see kind of how some of these goals tie together with kind of that economic development vision that you've been working on. And the last one we did is, the last goal I'll just note, we said, we mentioned to basically continue to update and implement that development vision as we know things change all the time and so just keeping that updated and tied to the master plan is always good. Any questions on the economic development piece?
Doesn't seem to be.
Okay. Moving on to slide 24, public facility services and recreation. So in this one, we kind of brought together some chapters from the previous plan and kind of put it into one. A lot of this stuff is tied together, so it helps kind of simplify some of this. We'll be looking at kind of touching on a vision for transportation and the recreation pieces, as well as creating tables, kind of visual, and you'll see this in a lot of the chapters when we get to a draft master plan. And basically, we like to have it more visual in terms of how the data is displayed. A lot of times, you see these master plans can get really packed, intensive, and, you know, people don't want to read a 300-page document. So we try to build them in such a way where there's a lot of, basically graphically displaying the data and putting all the important stuff up front, so that if somebody picks it up, you could go to the public facility services and recreation, understand the goals and kind of what the important elements are as you, and if you want to keep reading more detail, then obviously that's in the chapter two, but a little bit further back. So we'll be looking at some of that and then we're also going to be providing an above-ground utility plan, which is required by NRS and doesn't currently exist in the current plan. So looking at some of the goals, again, we try to combine some of the goals from the other chapters and kind of streamline these a little bit. This is the one where, going back to the septic, you know, we've heard bad and clear that that is an issue and so one of the goals here is we've kind of formed a goal around that, continue to work with staff on that and providing some examples of standards that could be adopted as part of, as part of your zoning code going forward.
Derek?
And again, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Waits again. Yeah, I did wonder, on that last, very last paragraph where you're putting all these recreational resources, and I thought, is that all of them or do you want input? Because you didn't have hiking or biking or golfing or swimming, and those are all important parts to ours.
Yeah, and so we, what we did was pull stuff from your current goals, so exactly correct is we would like to get input on this. If you want to list them all out, that's fine, we can do that. If we want to show them in just a recreation uses, we can do that, too.
Well, since you listed some and the others are very important to us in Lander, so I wanted to be sure you had those, too, that's all.
Okay. Yeah, like, yeah, exactly, things like that, we would love to get feedback on so that we can update these. Because at the, you know, at the end of the day, when we get through this process, we really want, you know, we really want these to be kind of goals for each element that, you know, both staff, the communities, the commission, and all the stakeholders are behind at the end of the day, so. So moving on to slide 26, just a couple more goals there. Is there any other questions on the public facility section that you'd like to discuss?
I think we're good.
Okay. Moving on to slide 28, so the other element we'll be adding to the master plan is kind of that implementation portion that we had talked about, and it's really just kind of creating strategies and action items that basically help kind of implement the master plan. And so some of those may be, you know, related to the septic goals, could be related to, you know, what are the next steps that we're going to take to make sure that that starts to get addressed? And so that's where I think this implementation kind of matrix helps us kind of organize and helps the commission and staff understand where the priorities are in terms of implementing the plan and kind of what the next steps are for that. And it helps so that the document doesn't sit around for five to 10 years and kind of lose track of some of those priorities. Any questions on that or comments? Okay. Moving on, so the last one, slide 28, some of the next steps. So the process we're at right now is, we've started drafting a master plan and we're kind of working through, you know, with this presentation and I think what you've received so far is kind of looking at some of those old policies and trying to come up with some new goals and policies that are more relevant for today and moving forward over the next 20 years. And then, you know, obviously, kind of working with staff and the commission and the stakeholders to kind of update those, that's kind of where we're at right now and kind of what we're looking for your feedback on. And we're going to continue working on closing the loops in some of the data that we're collecting for the land use, but as well as the other elements, including some of the conservation maps and some of those types of things. So that'll take place kind of over the next few weeks, hopefully. Um, hopefully, uh, be done with that by the end of March. And then, um, in terms of the draft plan, our goal is to, um, by April, end of April, have kind of a solid draft plan, um, that we can present, that's got a lot of the updated information from it. And then we'll be looking for feedback in terms of, you know, have we captured everything? Are there questions, comments? Um, and so we'll be kind of working with staff and stakeholders and the commission through that piece of it, and then we'll be taking notes, comments, um, to, to, to address kind of the final plan, creating the final plan, and then basically the final plan will be presented for adoption. Um, and then from there, we'll look, start looking at zoning code updates and where we need to, um, potentially make changes for that, and we'll provide some recommendations, um, for some initial zoning code updates. Is there any questions? Presentation, so, so with that, um, I don't know if Kyla or Bert have anything to add or if you guys have questions for me, I'd, I'd be happy to answer them.
Nope, I, I do not this time. I would like, uh, though I would like to take a few days to look through it more, in the case that, you know, and sit down with Kyla, um, but I'm good at this point.
I have nothing to add, Derek. Thank you.
No, thank you, Derek. And I haven't had, I haven't had time to completely go through every step of this either, so.
It's a big, big job. It's going to take some work, for sure.
It's, it's, it's a bigger process, so, you know, I, I think we're at a stage now where we'll, we'll have a lot more information, so, um, we'll just keep working with staff on kind of a lot of the information and kind of getting stuff in front of, in front of them so we can figure out, um, how to get feedback, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you guys.
All right. All right, move forward. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Kyla.
Thank you very much. For possible actions to approve, disapprove the annual work program for Nevada Department of Transportation in DOT and also to approve, um, or amend the top two project priorities for Lander County. All right.
Do we have anybody from NDOT on the line?
There's somebody on the line, but they've gone unmute themselves.
Um, NDOT, you will need to unmute yourselves.
I think we probably need to update, don't you guys? I mean, looking through that list. I think the, the lighting to the existing stop sign, um, I, I think that was important, but I think the whole backup to the Maverick is kind of a priority, don't you think?
I, and I agree, other than, in, in discussion with that prior, they said that they were not going to do anything about that.
Oh, they did say that?
Oh, uh-huh. On Maverick, the issue with the Maverick, the traffic. And so what, it's actually-
I'm actually Lee Bonner with NDOT. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. One of the-
Okay. I believe Cole, Cole Mortonson is on as well, our district director.
Can you hear me as well? This is Cole Mortonson. Can you hear me as well?
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you guys.
There's something you can do.
Huh.
I, I can't hear you, uh, Cole. Can you, this is Lee Bonner. Can you hear me at all?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Right. I think the board can't hear us, though.
We, we can, I can hear both of you guys now.
Okay, great. Great. We, we, we have a presentation that, um, that Cole would like to walk through if, um, you can make sure that's up on the screen.
Is somebody putting that up on the screen? Okay.
So, so if you can just go page by page, we have this in the backup.
I can do that.
And, uh, and the first page we have in our backup is a, a priority title and a priority description.
For the record, this is Cole Mortonson, I'm the district director for the Nevada Department of Transportation. Um, and so what we'd like to do today is to come before you, um, to present to you, um, our annual work program, as well as to discuss Lander County's priorities and concerns. Uh, this is part of the annual process that we do every year. Um, we, uh, your staff, we generally do a workshop, and then we'll come back before the county commission to have this discussion that we just had with you guys today. So at the top of the list, we have the top two priorities, as we understand them from the last, uh, set of workshops. And at this point in time, I believe that both of those have been completed. I believe that the flashing overhead light was installed by the county, and then we have evaluated the safety concerns with three oh five. And right now, um, no additional improvements are warranted, but we'll continue to monitor it. So this might be a good opportunity for the commission to identify two new, um, priorities. Um, the rest of the projects here, we understand that these are priorities and concerns for you guys, but we have listed they're in alphabetical, or at least identified with alphabetical, uh, identifiers rather than having them in some sort of priority order. So these aren't, other than the top two, they're listed in no particular order from a priority standpoint, if that makes sense. Um, uh, I think the one of the, well, at least it's my understanding that one of the, 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 uh, major, uh, major concerns for you guys right now are the, the installation of the sound walls. And I believe that you guys have staff working with, uh, Brad Ratliff, our district engineer for District Three on that, that that's moving forward. Um, there are a few other, uh, projects here that we've looked into. Um, the shared road signs on US fifty, currently when we looked, uh, there are no, there aren't really any good places to install additional signage in a safe manner, there are just too many curves, and then we want drivers paying attention to the road versus reading signs through that section of road. And that's the, that's the signage, I believe that that's been, uh, completed. Um, we've evaluated the IAD exit, uh, two thirty-three, and it meets applicable, uh, MUTCD standards for us right now. And let's see, moving on, it's my understanding that Maverick is actually working on their, uh, entrance there so that the trucks aren't backing up on the three oh five. Um, three oh five at Boyle Ranch Road. Um, we have completed a, a, a intersection, uh, oh, intersection, I forget what the, it's an ice, it's intersection configuration, uh, evaluation. And we have a future project that's coming to, to employ rapid retainer flashing light on that signage. We've evaluated the IAD exit two thirty-one, uh, traffic safety improvement, and at this point in time, as with the other exit, they are up to the standards that we have to design to. Uh, the pedestrian crosswalk improvements, um, we have evaluated, um, those, and we have determined that those are up to standard. Uh, we are working with the Nevada Department of Wildlife and our environmental division to develop a priority list for signage for wildlife warning signs. Um, it, it's my understanding that for the, uh, SR three oh four ADA and drainage improvements, we'll be addressing those with a future three oh project. And I, I mentioned earlier, the sound walls, and then the construction of a bypass from eight A to Hilltop, we believe that that's a county project that NDOT has, is what the planning of that. Are there any questions on the list of current priorities and concerns?
On, uh, this is, uh, Commissioner Ancho. I, one question I have on, for three oh five, from, um, coming in from the south, you know, to the north, on the signage there, um, it's often see those, the vehicles coming from out of town, the speed that they come in, the people from here understand that how, how it slows down and slows, they slow down properly. But like the truck drivers and people from not this area, they fly up over that overpass, and right at the bottom of that overpass is a crosswalk or, or a turn in for the hideaway. And so, um, I had called into the, uh, county mad, there was a, almost a head-on the other day because there was a truck driver coming up over that overpass, probably fifty miles an hour, and a truck turning into the Maverick, and there was no, I mean, it was a near head-on. And that's not the first time I have seen that, aside from the issues that go on in front of the Maverick already, and children use that crosswalk. So the signage is coming into town, is, everybody thinks it's still fifty, then forty-five, and nobody's going, uh, for out of town, is going anything other than forty-five coming over, over that overpass. So it would be, I would think, uh, on the top of the list to have some better signage or something different before somebody gets ran over or there's a head-on right at the, because right at the bottom is a crosswalk. And if you're not from here, they're flying through there.
And the four ways.
And the four ways.
Okay, we can look into that.
All right.
Yep.
Yeah, if we could, I've been thinking about this issue about the drivers, especially on eight oh four and whatever that street is, at the four way in the Owl Club. You know, if we could get some yellow striping, I, you know, maybe, uh, three hundred yards either side of the four way, that might get people's attention that, you know, hey, you need to stop at the four way. And I know you guys have done a good job, you have the solar blinking red lights around the stop sign, but you can still go and have a cup of coffee at the Owl Club, and you're going to see a semi blow right through there.
Um, just so you guys know, so the, the county put up this, the stoplights, and then Fred Wagner had put the red blinking light that will go back in the middle of that four way together in his shop yesterday. So that will be probably getting hung up in the next week.
The county red blinking light?
Yes, like it, like they had back in the, in the past, they had that red blinking light. So, so it's in progress on the four way.
Yeah, I don't know that that red blinking light worked too well.
Yeah, so the red blinking, uh, stop signs will stay up as well, but a little, little more something in the center for them.
We can try.
Uh, Robert, do you have anything for the, as far as law enforcement side? All right.
Is there, are there any other?
Uh, this is Commissioner Waits. Yeah, this is Commissioner Waits, and on your, um, on your one, one, two, A, B, yeah, US fifty and SR seven twenty-two Austin Airport signage. The new signage is up on fifty, and I understand from Lee that they will not put any new signs up for, for us at the airport on seven twenty-two. The one we have is so small, people fly by it. So we are in the process of doing a new sign on seven twenty-two ourselves, so that can come off your list.
Okay.
This is, I, I have-
Any other question?
Yes, I have a question. This is for eighty, though. Um, on, for the rest areas, um, are those going to be in this area, are they going to be reopened anytime soon? Are they going to be, what's going on with those?
You know, uh, Boyd Ratliff is on the phone, and he might have some of those, uh, data information on those rest stops, right?
Yes, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Brad Ratliff, I'm the district engineer for District Three. Um, Valmy, um, is currently being repaired for the water system. And the, the, the issue with Valmy was the water system. The issue right now with the Owowie is also the water system. The, I think the image of those water systems is caught up with us, and so with our testing for the Bureau of Safe Drinking Water, we couldn't meet any standards. So after, you know, closing them, we were walking through the process with Bureau of Safe Drinking Water to get those reopened. I anticipate by midsummer, Valmy should be reopened, and it may be a little bit longer for the Owowie. It's much older and has a lot more repairs that need to be, uh, completed.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So moving on to the third slide, what I want to talk about here just real quickly is our Nevada prioritization process. And this is a plan that was completed in, uh, two thousand and eighteen, and essentially with this is a, is a performance-based approach to guide the department in defining priorities on the one Nevada plant goals. And so you can see on the left-hand side, we have the six goals that we use in evaluating projects, that's enhance safety, preserve infrastructure, optimize mobility, transform economies, foster sustainability, and connect communities. Um, the department's completed a priority-driven, two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-four state, uh, transportation improvement plan and work program, and we continue to refine the process that will include assessment of long-range transportation. The process will guide the department in the allocation of resources towards the needs and oil projects to meet one Nevada plant goals and ultimately improve performance of our transportation network. And so through this, what we're working on is actually doing a data-driven, um, transparent process to show everyone how we're prioritizing our projects. And so, um, as you can see on the right-hand side, we start off with a long-range screening of mates, um, and then as we start stepping through those processes, we get to a mid-program level prioritization. So as we start developing the project a little bit more, and then we use the goals and screening and, uh, for the prioritization, and then eventually we end up with our SIP and our annual work program prioritization in the end. So if we can move on to step four, I'll talk a little bit more about our work program highlights. So in the last year, um, we can, uh, constructed the new sidewalk on Front Street. Um, we also completed the US fifty Austin three R project, um, and then we have the SR three oh five chip seal job. You also noticed that the SR three oh five chip seal job is down below. Um, our, our district staff actually got that done ahead of our annual work program, so we kind of had it doubled up and we have an, uh, adjusted work program to reflect that. Um, and so upcoming projects in the two thousand and twenty-one work program, which we're asking, um, for your acceptance of today, is, uh, several chip seals, as well as the cattle dead replacement, and then, uh, purchasing chips for, uh, FY twenty-two projects, including the drainage road and SR eight oh, eight oh six. So this, um, I think it's one of the other things that I should mention here is that the, uh, gas tax contribution in Lander County, uh, it was, uh, one million five hundred and seventy-two thousand, uh, nine hundred and forty-four dollars, um, and it, uh, averages about, uh, one point five million dollars annually. So you can see, you know, while this next year's work program is at one point one million dollars, that also kind of reflects the need to, um, make up for the ten point nine million dollars that was spent in Austin here over the last year or so. So, uh, as you can see, we're, we're investing more in Lander County than the tax, uh, gas tax is producing at this point in time. Any questions on this slide?
I don't think so.
Okay. So that brings us to our suggested motions on the next slide, which is to modify the top two priorities for Lander County, um, and then we're asking for a motion to accept the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one annual work program.
So they want us to talk priorities?
Are they, are you just wanting us to, um, approve your proposed work, uh, your work program?
Um, this is, yes, well, well, it's, the motion is actually to accept the work program because this is also the, the process that we've already had, had approved through our transportation board. So this is our opportunity to present to the commission to have you guys accept the work program as we've presented it here to you. And then the other motion would be to take a look back at slide number two and potentially identify two new top priorities for Lander County. And I, I understand the, the concern about the, uh, traffic traveling in, uh, from the south, going over that overpass, and, you know, the need to maybe evaluate that from a state, safety standpoint, but that might be something that you want to move to the top of this list. As I said earlier, I also understand that the sound walls, um, for the residential areas in Oak Creek Avenue, Wild Horse Way, Indian Springs, and Wilson Avenue, uh, have also been a concern for the county. So this would be an opportunity to discuss and reprioritize those top two items.
So he's on the last three pages of your guys' packet is where he's, okay.
Do you know how this?
I have that, just to suggest the motions.
No, no, I'm the one answering.
So he's on the last three pages of your guys' packet, is where he's, okay.
Do you know how this?
They're all state funded though.
Yeah, it's state funded, yeah, it's some improvements that we need. I'd like to see.
Which one do you think?
Like to see something though, with the four-way and. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve this request from the Nevada Department of Transportation, NDOT.
You're leaving the top two priorities the same, right?
I think we do that, we can do that in the, um, a different, do we do that in the, within this motion?
Yes.
Well, one of the, um, ones has already been addressed through the blinking red light or not, or we.
Yes.
Yeah, so then the overpass would be one, I would think, that we could move up some signage or something better to slow down tra, um.
Okay, all they're asking for is the top two.
I, I, I know.
Yeah, just the pass.
Mm-hmm. So you wanna move one of them?
Well, if we're already addressing the three oh five and Front Street, or three oh four and Front Street, because we're putting up a green light ourselves, then we can put something else in its place.
Okay, so you have three oh five, and then what's your next one?
We've got speed limits on that, the end of the off-ramp, twenty-five miles an hour. Place is posted right there.
Well, it's posted, and it's posted right here at twenty-five, going up to right here, it's posted, and if they still are not.
So if it's posted as they come off and they go toward Maverick, they'll know that it's twenty-five, instead of, you almost have an accident there of a semi coming down, because they think it's forty-five, which is assumable, if we had a sign at the off-ramp.
Well, I'm sorry, did you hear?
I think I said one, you just don't care.
Well.
So Kathy, which one are you moving up, what number?
Well, this one, the one I had asked for was just, was a new one that I had asked on here, that was not on their list, is there something that we can, can we add that onto this list, is what I'm asking them.
Oh, you can add anything onto the list.
You're asking if we can.
Yes, if we can replace the, the main street, since we're doing, yes, since we're doing, replacing the one, the very top one.
So a motion can't be made with replacing the first one.
Okay, so, uh, having a, a motion made to replace that with some better signage to slow down out-of-town traffic, don't ask this overpass from south to north into town.
What kind of signage, because it, it does go, there's speed limits.
Oh, yeah, but right here, I mean, even if you pay atten, it goes really, it's forty-five, and then all of it's thirty, and then twenty-five, I mean, just that fast, and so.
So maybe like a, right.
Something, you know, that catches, that's more prevalent than them to see, we know that, but people from out-of-town, because it changes so quickly, um, right by the sheriff's office is where it changes, and so then they're still going.
Isn't that the blinking twenty-five?
For the school district, yeah.
Yeah.
It does, you cannot, when you're coming in, if you're not paying attention, you don't see, cause that's the thing the Maverick put in, Maverick is the one that requested a long time ago when they first.
Do you want another sign?
Something, a better signage, there has to be better signage, I believe, but I'm not, I'm, I'm only one, it depends what you guys want as well, I'm just saying that.
Can you move the speed limit back further, so that way the twenty-five.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely.
Sooner than the.
Absolutely, you could, I think.
That would be the only way you would give them a notice.
Yeah, and which is.
The sign isn't gonna make a difference.
No, and I, that, yeah, yeah, you can move it back further, so they're, yeah, um, if the signage could be moved back further, so they're, they're slowing down faster before the overpass would be a s- a simple solution.
Yeah, if your speed zone would be moved back.
Yeah, just move the speed zone back. But that's my suggestion, that's, it's up to everyone else, what they want is their number one.
What about this conduct intersection, intersection control evaluation to prove the area for the Boils Ranch Road right there, three oh five section?
Like, that could be number one or two, cause I think that's still an issue. It's horrible right there, absolutely.
Where is it?
But.
Right here.
Rose Ranch, three oh five.
We're doing a traffic study there, aren't we? That's, did we decide a couple weeks back to do a traffic study there?
No, that was requested by the developer, the developer, that came before us to change the zoning, we asked him to do a traffic study first.
Yeah, not do.
Yeah, I think, I think if we start the twenty-five mile an hour zone sooner, coming north, that would, that might help. I, I don't know how to get people to attend.
So, um.
Well, I think we need to, I think right there, that's.
Which one is that?
The conduct intersection control evaluation to prove the area, and that's State Route three oh five and Boils Ranch Road.
Yes, so.
I definitely think we need to address that.
So, I mean, we can put that.
If I may, this is Cole Mortenson again, um, the, uh, intersection, uh, configuration evaluation was completed at that location, and we have a future project coming to install what we call rapid rectangular flashing beacons on the signage to get, to improve, uh, I guess, uh, driver attention through that intersection.
Okay, all right, so they already have a solution for that, so. But, uh, Bert, do you have a suggestion for one or two?
I don't know where you guys stand on the sound wall, I know that I have been contacted with people that would like the sound wall to be looked at, or considered, um, outside of. Out, outside of that, I don't.
All right, so, yeah, I, I guess we can, um, put the sound wall up to the top two.
And then is there, um, maybe they have some information on the beautification on the freeway for you guys as well, I know that Brian had asked about that in the past, so may, maybe NDOT can give us, uh, an update on where they stand, I know they said they were going from state line to state line, but I'm, I don't know if it's draw out of a hat or how that's, how that's working.
Oh, it's like, yeah, Winnebago, you know, you look at their, their off-ramps, it does, they have some really nice, just like, wow, this is pretty cool, you know?
Whatever they are.
Yeah. So we'll, uh, we can ask for an update after we try to get these first two, so we can do the sound wall within the first one or two, and then what's the other one? If we know that they're looking at different signage for Boils Ranch Road and three oh five, so is there any other, um, other ones that need to be up? Patsy, is there something in here that dire for, needed for Austin, in, within this lower part?
The only thing on here that we've been asking for for years is a share of the road signage, and that, that's just a matter of, you know, putting some stuff on the, the highway, I don't know why, that can't be done, and why it takes years, I don't understand, but.
Must be COVID.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, with the share of the road signage, we have standards that we have to follow, which also include sign spacing, and, 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 um, it takes into account user sightlines, and how fast traffic is, is traveling down that road, and when we evaluated that section, basically there isn't enough room in locations that would be prudent to put a sign like that, to actually have one that would meet those spacing requirements and visibility requirements.
Well, we just have so many bikers that it would be nice to, uh, tell some of the drivers that they need to share the road, cause it's a biking area, and that highlights it, that's all, but whenever, but I'm okay for the top two, whatever you guys wanted to do.
Well, I think that, uh, the one that's also in part important, um, can be brought up to, uh, besides the sound wall, the other important one, um, I think would be the, uh, um, their.
Well, there's several that are important, but you guys gotta decide your top two.
That's why I'm saying, to construct the crosswalks through Lander County, um, those are up to standard, those are pretty high, you know, to make sure we have the, you know.
We need to address safety.
Um, crosswalks, so, I mean, the sound wall, and for now, the, you know, crosswalks for all the.
You have two choices, go for it.
That's what I'm saying, the sound wall would be the top two, the sound wall and crosswalks, and I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, is that all right for everybody, or does somebody else?
So you refer to them as G and J.
Okay, so G, I'm sorry, G and J, to be more clear.
Number one and number two in your motion.
Okay, all right, so for G and J, for number one and number two, is everyone, somebody wants to make the motion for that? Are we good with that?
We just crosswalks, right?
Mm-hmm.
Improvement.
Yes.
And the, uh, sound wall.
Yes. So is G and J, no, because on this one it's.
On the first page, on the priority title.
The back page that has it, they have those on there, so G and J is, you know, we have a motion for those for our top two, so we can get through this.
If I may, it's my understanding that we did evaluate the crosswalks through there, and that the crosswalks are up to and meet our standards at this point, so if, if there are certain areas that you guys are concerned about, we could certainly have somebody, you know, reevaluate those areas.
Well, I know we do the sound, um, the sound wall.
Definitely do that.
That one, and so, uh, somebody else decide, pick, throw one out there with a letter behind it.
So the sound wall is which, G or J, cause it doesn't show it on mine.
On the first page on priority title, where it says priority title, it has one, two, then A, B, C, D, two K.
Oh, on the first one it does.
Oh, right here?
Yeah, and we're looking further back, and you don't, it doesn't have those, so, um, J is the sound wall.
Okay, so J, we definitely want to, uh, okay. Okay, so J. And then what about this, uh, have we discussed much about the construction of a southern bypass from three oh five to I eighty?
Which one is that?
Any concerns, this is the very last one.
Okay, so, um, what's exact, what was that really about?
I don't know, what, what was the discussion, what was the discussion behind that?
Guys, what is on K? Could you give a little bit of background on that?
Yeah, this is Lee Bonner, um, the, when you look at, uh, the, the amount of mighty trucks that are coming up three oh five, the idea in the workshop was to, um, construct a bypass on the southern side, so trucks didn't have to, land trucks didn't have to go through town.
That's a good idea. Cause there's a lot of commercial traffic that runs up that road, that has to go through town to get back to their freeway, or actually has to go to the overpass up to that.
So then where would that go?
I don't know, I don't know.
Okay, so, all right, I mean, I'm.
So what was the proposed, uh, like routing on that, what was your ideas on it?
Bert, do you wanna, uh, address that from the county standpoint, cause I know y'all have done some of this work?
Yeah, so the, so I believe that part of this that they're talking about is a bypass road in, that's going in out here where the water line just went in, that we're in the process of going through FEMA to get to, across the river, um, that is part of the bypass, so it would be a matter of connecting somewhere from, from here to eight A, wherever that may be, and I think that they were talking maybe by the golf course, or something out there, but there hasn't ever been a distinct map of where that connection would, would take place. The bypass that the county is looking at is on county ground, and that's the one that we're putting in that, that one mile stretch of road between eight A and Hilltop, and we're in, we're in process of that right now.
Boy, I hope next year we go back to the workshops, this is just too hard to do over a commission meeting.
Yeah, that, yeah, this is hard to do this, this way, so.
Well, can we leave just one on the top two there, and then we can come back after a workshop next year and, and progress, because it seems to me that NDOT's done a pretty good job of leading most of the tasks.
Yeah, so we, I mean, I think that the, um, yeah, um, the, we can focus right now, I guess, on the sound wall.
And then I think that would be perfectly fine to do, and, um, and, the unfortunate COVID pandemic kinda threw a wrench in everything for us, but I, I do believe that our planning group is anticipating, um, getting the, uh, workshops going again here as soon as possible, and then, um, be back out to the counties to try to develop other priorities as well.
All right, I'll make a motion that we move, uh, J into, uh, um, a top priority, um.
Which would replace number one, so we've already taken care of number one, why don't you?
Okay, so my motion, yeah, is to, uh, we'll replace number one with J.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then that's all, okay, then we need, all right, so that, very good, so then we just need a second.
I'll second.
All right, so Brian made the motion.
And move number two, the what?
Just leave it?
Two stage.
Two stage, we're not changing anything. We're just move, change, we just, yes.
I'll second the motion.
Well, our second.
If I may.
Yes.
If, if I, if I may, you could also, um, suggest doing the number two project or number two priority to do a speed study or a road safety evaluation on, uh, three oh five there as you come into town.
Okay, so we leave, we change one to J, and then leave number two, so, all right.
We have a motion, I second that.
Okay, so Brian made the motion, art second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, if nobody objects, I will make a motion to accept the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one annual work program by NDOT.
And I'll second.
All right, Patsy made the motion, and Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we're good, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
These poor folks have been waiting all morning, I'm so sorry.
All right, so.
Muted. Unmuted.
Moving forward, for discussion and possible action to approve, dis, uh, disapprove a grant request in the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars in Nevada Outdoor Schools' , um, support travel, and, um, and program supplies for classroom lessons and field trips provided by Lander County students, to provide, to Lander County students, okay.
Okay, I don't mean to interrupt, and I know that they've sat here through the whole meeting, but I believe, uh, Caitlin had reached out and spoke with you guys, correct, on the request?
Blake and I both have.
Yes, we've been.
Okay, um, and so I just have to make the commission aware.
Sure.
Um, that, you know, we've suggested that they come back during budget for this, cause it's not the, the standard time for it, and, uh, and we let them know that we'd be making you guys aware of that, but, but, like, still welcome to present.
Yeah, you can go ahead and present.
Certainly, yes, so that's really what I'm here to do today, is just kinda update you on all what we, we've been doing in your county and with your students, and what we have coming up, and then for you to consider as you go to your budget hearings, um, seeing if you can, uh, fund some of our, our programs here in Lander County, so, thank you, I know it's lunchtime, I will try not to take too much time, about ten minutes of your time this morning, and then, uh, get you guys out of here, so, uh, I'm Melanie Urquaga, Executive Director at Nevada Outdoor School, I have Brandon Allen over here with us, he is our Education Director, so he's really the guy that's communicating with the teachers and, and, uh, the students, and then getting our people all trained, so, um, we're based out of Winnebago, we've been there for eighteen years now, since two thousand, well, almost nineteen years, um, and then we also have an office in Elko, um, that we opened on, up in two thousand and sixteen, so we sort of service Lander County from both locations at times. Uh, so thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come and, uh, present for you today, uh, Nevada Outdoor School is where our mission is to inspire exploration of the natural world, responsible stewardship of our habitat, and dedication to community. The main goal of all NOS pro, programs, and I'll say NOS, cause Nevada Outdoor School is an awful big mouthful when I say it time and time again, so we're also known as NOS, or N O S, um, a lot of teachers will refer to us as, um, the main goal of our programs is to influence positive outdoor behavior by providing people the motivation, knowledge, and skills to practice responsible outdoor recreation. NOS programs strive to deepen participants' connection to, understanding of, and respect for the natural world, and what we really want is for Nevadans to be healthy, happy, and engaged community members who feel connected to the natural world and choose to explore the outdoors responsibly. NOS works to accomplish our mission by focusing on three main areas, our youth education, training, and skills courses, and a healthy community. What I should do is, I'm sorry, run this slideshow instead of, there we go, um, three main areas, youth education, trainings and skills courses, and our healthy community. NOS youth-focused programs inspire the younger. NOS youth-focused programs inspire the younger generation to take a greater interest of our na- of nature and see the outdoors as an amazing place to learn and explore. Through school-based nature, school-based youth programs like classroom lessons and place-based, place-based field trips. Nature after-school activities and fun exploration-based summer camps, which is just to name a few of our programs. NOS youth-focused programs engage and empower our next generation of leaders to care about and become stewards of the natural world. Our training program, programs provide participants with the motivation, knowledge, and skills to practice responsible recreation and the tools to inspire others to do the same. NOS provides outdoor ethics trainer courses, community outdoor skills trainings, hands-on ATV courses, and educator workshops across the state. NOS healthy community-focused programs work with the communities we serve to provide opportunities for people to get outside and explore responsibly, learn more about outdoor ethics and our amazing natural world, and to hopefully give back. We lead fun hikes, even in the winter, uh, seasonal family friend community programs, and we take our interactive roadshow and outreach boost to a variety of events around the state. Um, I'll just highlight there a little bit, uh, we have a really, really strong outdoor ethics program, and outdoor ethics and responsible recreation is really important to the leaders of the state. We get very generous and strong funding from State Parks Rec Trails Program, it's been a continued partnership for a long, long time. Uh, we also get funding from the OHV Commission, uh, so if you're, uh, an avid HV or OHV rider, even motorcycle rider, those registration dollars, uh, are truly going back to the state, they really, really are.
I have a question, so on, on your conduct and ethics is, I mean, because Nevada, northern Nevada especially, is, we're really big hunters and fishermen.
Absolutely.
Is there ever a message that's portrayed to the youth that that's not okay, anything like that in your curriculum?
That what's not okay?
Hunting?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
We actually provide, we actually provide hunter safety education, Brandon is, is our lead on that, so.
Thank you.
No, absolutely, I have a very rich hunting, uh, background myself.
Yeah.
Um, no, we're definitely, definitely pro outdoor recreation, honestly, there is no outdoor recreation that is not okay for us. So if you're getting outside and, um, just enjoying the outdoors, and especially with friends and family, that's really our, our basis, for sure. Absolutely, thank you for that question.
So I'm actually a hunter education instructor.
Yeah. Excellent. Uh, here we go, um, what we're also extremely proud of is our AmeriCorps National Service Program that places AmeriCorps service members at a variety of nonprofit organizations in rural Nevada, including at Nevada Outdoor School, um, and we've also had members in the past here at Lander County School District. We address environmental stewardship and healthy futures. Our AmeriCorps members typically serve one-year terms, but there's also six-month and three-month terms available too. Uh, while we are extremely proud of all these valuable programs, we're really here to highlight our school-based programs here in Lander County. And though we've been periodically traveling to Battle Mountain Elementary to provide nature-based science curriculum since two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand seventeen, we really began visiting the school once a month, uh, during the school year and increasing that to twice a month this last year. Um, we've had extremely favorable response. This chart shows the increase in, uh, Battle Mountain teacher and students' participation since two thousand seventeen. And even with COVID, uh, shutting everything down last month, we really still had a robust year of, uh, classroom lessons. And mostly what we missed out was our, our spring field trip programs. Uh, these are a few, uh, the favorable responses we've received from our teachers, um, and I've also included with your handouts a few, a, a support letter from several of our, um, Battle Mountain Elementary's teachers. Um. One of our very proud ones, our second grade watershed field trip is sort of our flagship, uh, field trip that we started many, many years ago, and we've expanded upon that since then. Um, but it's a very, uh, very well-run, we've been doing it a long time, and we're very, very good at it, and, and the teachers love it. And like they said, this is by far the best educational field trip for second grade students. It's well-planned out, it's educational, hands-on, and fantastic. These are the benefits of learning outside, right? We know that, um, outdoor education enhances indoor education, and the studies are actually coming back to actually show this, which is very, very exciting. But it truly does, it increases attendance, it improves an attitude towards school, increased connectivity, creativity, decision-making, and problem-solving skills. Uh, increased standardized test scores, develop a sense of care through connection, a decreased anxiety and boredom, decreased behavior challenges. An increased trust and empathy towards others, and increased self-confidence, and surpassing self-set expectations. So all of our programs, y- you know, they're, it's, they're not frivolous programs, and I gave you guys this handout also, summary of what we do, and I'm not gonna go into that, but I'd like for you to look over that when you have some time, to really show that our, our offerings and our lessons are, are well-thought-out, they're Nevada standards-aligned. Um, and, and we're going through them year after year to make sure that they're up to standards and they're top-notch. Challenges of learning outside, and this is where the teachers have, have a little bit of fear, fear of accidents, they don't, don't know what to happen if a kid falls down, goes crash, or rolls off the hill. We do, teacher preparedness, the cost, the opportunities, we can take that all away from teachers and administrators and provide these sort of programs for free. If you compare similar programs to Reno, and Reno's completely different from northern, from rural Nevada, and we serve rural Nevada, we don't serve Reno. Um, but teachers or PTAs have to come up with the money to pay for these sort of lessons. And this is why I'm here before you guys today, is because I go to our city, our counties, our school districts, our mining companies, our, our, uh, BLM, Rec Trails, all those folks to be able to offer these programs to teachers for no cost, that takes that burden off of them. Our lessons are aligned with Nevada academic standards, they're well-planned and self-sufficient, and they're taught by our trained AmeriCorps naturalists. The addition to that is if we're not able to get into your classroom because of restrictions or, or, uh, virtual or whatever, we have almost all of our lessons and are working to get all of our lessons online. So we have those resources available for parents and teachers as well, even if we're not able to come and provide those ourselves. Um, right now, this is, uh, some specific money we're getting to support Lander County programs. Um, I've highlighted where, uh, our budget would sort of fall in if you guys were to, uh, fund us at five thousand dollars. But we also get, uh, money from Nevada Gold Mines, small mine development, SSR mining, these are all your neighbors right here in your community, they do support these programs. And then our AmeriCorps, uh, federal grant also supports the, um, personnel to be able to run the programs. Still have some unsecured, but, um, like you guys, I work in the nonprofit field, and I work all year long to secure that funding. We have about a seven hundred thousand dollar budget, um, but, but we work hard. And, uh, again, I'll invite you to look through our annual report that we had recently, and that'll show you specifically where our funding comes from and where our money goes. Um. I would invite you for some questions, but I'm gonna have you hold off on that for just a second, because I'm gonna show you a video, a little promotional video we had put together, I'm really proud of it. And it, um, gives a little bit more different perspective on our programs than coming from me, because of course I can talk about it over and over, um. For, for days and days, but, uh, it's much better coming from the people that actually are benefiting from our programs.
We're on screens now more than ever. That's the reality of living in the twenty-first century, from work to school and even our social lives, always revolve around screens. With all this time online, we need a way to disconnect. Recent shows that getting outside for less than five minutes can counteract the reality of our screen-soaked lives. We're fortunate in Nevada to have easy access to open space, clean air, and all the things that nature provides. We here at Nevada Outdoor School, I'd invite you to join us in exploration of our natural world, because we appreciate the positive impact of getting outside. Through your generosity to Nevada Outdoor School, we prepare people of all ages to care for themselves and nature through community events and training courses.
Uh, my name is Brandon Thon, and we're in the Moyle Canyon in Elko, Nevada. I have been a part of two NOS programs, there are overnight camps in the Moyle. And both of those camps were really fun, and I learned a lot.
I think what made us so fun is the fact that we actually get to do activities that aren't the everyday school activities. You get to go outside, play games.
Getting kids outside not only ceases their chances of being able to be fully independent and confident outside, but also gives them the opportunity to explore things that they wouldn't learn otherwise.
My name's Emily, and I'm right now at the Moyle, um, I was at, I was doing an event on Nevada Outdoors, um, out pellets. Um, I found a school, a couple of bones, and it was lots of fun, I got to play on the river. Right now, we're on a little nature walk, and we're all taking a break.
Every child who attends a Nevada Outdoor School program is better prepared to care for the natural world. To increase accessibility of environmental education, Nevada Outdoor School also offers classroom lessons. As AmeriCorps members teach these lessons, they receive on-the-job training and develop valuable skills such as planning, organizing, and presenting. Your contributions allow Nevada Outdoor School to provide the necessary supplies to the hands of rural Nevada children to expand their outdoor knowledge and skills.
My name's Harmony Stoll, and I teach third grade outside. I appreciate having Nevada Outdoor Schools come in, especially as a newer teacher, because they can really supplement what I'm doing. A nice feeling as a teacher to know that you get to expose your students to all that good quality content. And it doesn't always have to come from the same source. Uh, this year, doing virtual learning, we got to do a class on chemical reactions. That was adapted to a classroom where everybody had to start art, that was really great. And on a personal level, my daughter has done Nevada Outdoor School camps in the summertime, and she has fantastic time. Never seen her more tired. Even when we're exhausted from a hike up in the mountains, and she just talked about it for weeks. So it's great to have Nevada Outdoor Schools come in, because they have a way of introducing some concepts that the kids can take with them.
If you believe in what we do, visit NevadaOutdoorSchool.org today to start your journey with Nevada Outdoor School by giving your time, outdoor skills, or monetary donations.
Anyway, we're a little proud of.
Yeah, you have very well done on your promotional piece.
Uh, yeah, we have a friend in, uh, named Chris LaBarrow from Elko that put that together for us, at a very reasonable, reasonable cost, so, good friend of ours. So, anyway, like I said, I'd like for you guys to consider and remember us as you go to your budget hearings. The five thousand's equivalent to the same amount that Humboldt County Commission and the Elko County Commission get, gives us as well. Um, and I just, you know, again, would like you guys to know about what we're providing to the students. Um, what do we have coming up? We're, we're doing back in the classrooms a little bit more, which is exciting, we might have to do virtual. Uh, we came over and helped with a rat dissection recently, uh, which is a little out of our wheelhouse, but we thought, you betcha, we're on board. Um, and we have our watershed field trip, I think, coming up, and we're gonna be able to, to be able to provide that in person, so that's exciting too.
So Melanie, have you been, um, already, have you been on their agendas and you've already received their five thousand for this year or last year?
From the commissioner, the commission?
Yeah.
Yes, for this year right now.
For the, the counties that have paid?
Yes.
That's for this year?
For this current year, but it's consistent.
So you're okay if we put it on the budget and you get it in July?
Absolutely, I expect it for next, next fiscal year, yes, if you approve our funding, it would be to support programming, yeah, for next fiscal year.
That's a good point, because we don't usually have people come during the year and ask us for grants, it's done during budget, that was one of my concerns.
Sure.
Are your staff certificated by the Department of Ed?
It depends, so we have educators, so Brandon is a certified, uh, teacher as well, and, uh, we have our associate director that is, as well. The nature of our AmeriCorps National Service Program is those are the educators that go into the classroom, so they come in and they serve with us. They get fully trained in various things, but in addition to your, your basic skills, but behavior management, um, summer camp management, uh, you know, classroom. Presentation, you know, all that stuff, uh, making lesson plans, curriculum, that sort of thing, so they come in, we train them, they serve for, for a time, and then they leave us. They get a big giant education award at the end, so for a year to come and serve at Nevada Outdoor School, they do get paid a living stipend. It's not huge, it's about fourteen thousand a year, but the education award right now is over sixty-one hundred dollars.
Okay, you have insurance?
Absolutely.
Okay, you do background checks?
Absolutely, absolutely, everybody, no, these are valid questions, he.
Background checks are very important.
Absolutely, absolutely, we actually, um, go a little further than is required. Um, the AmeriCorps program is a federal, federal grant, and they require full background checks on everybody. They sort of changed their process recently, so they, they give the approval, um, to yes or no, and we don't see what is ba- on that background check. I go further, um, and anybody that comes to work for us for Nevada Outdoor School goes through the full state and FBI fingerprints and everything.
I'm a little protective of our, our children.
I absolutely agree with you, I absolutely agree with you.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, uh.
Why, it's really no motion, I, yeah.
Okay, is that done yet?
No.
I'd just like to say, I think it's friggin' awesome what you guys have done.
Thank you.
I mean, I come from a, a time where, and probably most everybody up here, where I entertain myself with the dirt pile, throwing dirt clods and playing pops and robbers, and today it's just, it's social media, so I think, I think, I think it's absolutely fantastic.
You know, people, people ask us all the time too, they're, they say, especially at summer camps, right, how do, well, how do you get their phones away? Well, you just don't allow it.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's funny, it's not the kids that care about the phones, it's the parent that wants to get ahold of Johnny, you know, at eight o'clock at night and make sure that he's okay, and you know what, the kids are okay. They're, they're fine, and we have phones, we have cell phones, um, they're welcome to take pictures, but you know what, you can still get to close disposable cameras and, and, uh, and everything, so.
Well, it sounds like an Edsub program, and thank you.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
I took a part in, yeah, it was part of my curriculum.
Thank you for staying with us all day.
Yes, I appreciate that. Oh, I appreciate your time, I really do, and I, I'm very, very proud of, of what we're able to accomplish, um, and I think it's, it's very, very powerful and important to the students, um, in our communities, and, and we're happy to be here and, and serve in your community as well.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Alright, guys, thanks so much.
Alright, so any correspondence reports, future agenda items?
I like no. Um, what, do we want to put on there about, uh, the, an item to potentially discuss becoming members of the organization that we were talking about yesterday?
Yeah.
Uh, it, what's the abbreviation?
SP. Hold on.
It's basically, uh, Sheriff's Organization that supports the Constitution of the United States of America. So, if, yes.
It is called. I can't read it, I need my glasses. Constitutional Sheriffs. Founder of the Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association.
There you go. Yeah, so, we just, we come across those guys, and we thought, maybe it might be, we could discuss maybe becoming members or supporting them.
And supporting.
Yeah.
I think that those particular, that particular group of people need to have some vocal support.
Absolutely, yeah.
Especially the chiefs.
Right.
Any other agenda items?
We have a couple that we just heard.
Yep.
Yeah.
So do we have any public comment?
I made one.
I'll second.
Alright, Art made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Bye.
Aye.
Bye, everybody.